Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. Happy New Year. My name is Elise Buckley-Weber, and I'm the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Agoura Hills. And our mayor is running a few minutes late, so he'll step in and take over the gavel and go. But we're going to start anyways because it's our six o'clock start time. Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council meeting. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers and also by utilizing video conferencing. All attendees in the council chambers will be required to follow current state and county public health guidelines. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices and do not access Zoom during the live meeting as it will cause interference with the audio visual system in the council chambers. Tonight's meeting may be viewed on Zoom via the link on the agenda, by livestream on YouTube by entering "Agoura Hills City Council Meeting" in your browser and clicking on the link for January 11, 2023, or view the live or archived meeting on the city's website at agourahillscity.org and click on the "Watch Meetings Online" button. I'll now defer to the city's, the city clerk, Kimberly Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak on any item listed on the agenda. Any person in the council chambers who wishes to speak or submit a written comment is requested to complete a public comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk, that's me, prior to the public comment portion of the item. Comments submitted at the meeting will be provided to the city council for review and filed with the official record. For any person participating remotely, written public comments were requested to be emailed by 4:00 PM today and distributed to the city council in advance of the meeting. To request to speak during public comment, please click on the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar. Request to speak must be received prior to the mayor closing, or Mayor Pro Tem, closing the public comment portion of the item. Public testimony for all speakers is limited to three minutes per speaker. Written public comments will not be read aloud by the city clerk. For full details, please refer to the Public Participation section on the agenda. Thank you.
I will now call tonight's meeting to order, and I would like to ask our newest member of the council, Jeremy Wolfe, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, thank you. If we could please rise and place our right hand over our heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolfe. And now I'll defer to the city clerk again to take a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Here.
Councilmember Wolfe?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber, excuse me. Let the record reflect that Mayor Anstad is not yet here, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now, we, a report of closed session is next on our agenda. We had no closed session tonight, so there's nothing to report. I'm now going to ask one of my council members to make a motion and get a second to approve tonight's agenda. Please state your names, as we've been doing for people who are watching us on Zoom.
This is Deborah Klein-Lopez. I move to approve tonight's agenda.
This is Councilmember Sylvester. I second.
Thank you. And Ms. Rodriguez, will you do, please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolfe?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber, you have approval four to zero.
Thank you. Our present, there was, there's no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to the Intergovernmental, Special Purpose Committee, and Departmental Reports. Are there any reports from staff? Seeing none, are there any reports from city council members? Seeing none, we will move on to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to the city clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. We respectfully request that if you have something to distribute to the council, you hand it to our city clerk and do not approach the dais. I'm now deferring to the city clerk for public comments.
Thank you. We do have one written comment that was received from Tracy Smith that I'll pass on to you in just a moment. Our first speaker is Patricia, is it Adarim or Adarim? And she will be followed by Joyce Klein.
Hello, I'm currently a resident for more than 20 years on Lake Lindero Drive.
Now, is your mic on, because I can barely hear you. Is that mic on, everybody?
I don't know. Should a green button or anything?
I'm not sure.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Lake Lindero Drive for more than 20 years, and recently you painted lines down the center of the street, and you give the, these lines give the illusion of it being a thoroughfare. It, I think it encourages more traffic. Plus, it wasn't our option. We were never notified that you were going to do this, and I strongly object to it because it reduces the price on our house, because it's a busy street now, according to the lines. And I would like to know who authorized it and if you're going to take it off.
Thank you for your comments. We are not allowed to engage with you when you're testifying to matters, not on the agenda, excuse me, but I'll make sure that the, if you leave your contact information, that one of our--
They have it. They have it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joyce Klein, who will be followed by Laura Lenninger.
Hi, my name is Joyce Klein, and I'm representing the homeowners of the terraces development of 24 homes built around 2014 to 15 along Agoura Road between Chesbrough and Liberty Canyon and located about a quarter of a mile northwest of the Wallace-Annenberg Wildlife Bridge under construction. Around 2015, I represented the development at a council meeting here with questions, issues, including a potential sound wall. From 2016 to 17, I contacted Caltrans and Metro, and they took a decibel reading, what was, and they said they did, but did not qualify apparently under their sound allowances at that time. We need to exceed 67 decibels, it seems. I pursued Caltrans and Metro with numerous calls and follow-up letters. In 2018, the Woolsey Fire jumped the 101 and our development, development, burning guardrails and vegetation, contacted Caltrans and requested they repair the guardrail and replace vegetation, which they later did after a water-catch basin was constructed on the 101. It was very dangerous as a truck almost went over the embankment towards Agoura Road and major safety and fire concern. 2018 to 2021, the reconstruction of the Palo Comato Bridge at Chesbrough. The Lost Hills, I've just, that's just what happened. The Lost Hills residents on the north side of the 101 were granted a sound wall due to the reconstruction of the northbound on-ramp due to retrofitting. This year, the start of the Wallace-Annenberg Wildlife Bridge. On the 4th, I contacted Mike Camo of Caltrans, who in, put me, who is in charge of the construction and maintenance of the bridge. He suggested I contact a Mr. Fulgen Assentian of Metro. He turned me over to a Mr. Ricardo Corona and his boss, Ms. Laudris Christie, manager in charge of funding all of the sound wall projects. On the 27th, Mr. Corona set up a three-way conference call with myself and Ms. Christie. She suggested we ask the city if they would be willing to help fund the wall with Metro. I understand there will be a 200-foot wall on each side of the wildlife bridge, followed with a chain-link fencing that goes down three to four feet underground. We are requesting they continue the wall north instead of a chain-link. South towards Liberty Canyon, there is a large office building blocking sound for the development below on Liberty. Plus, they have their own wall surrounding their development. The same with the development north of us towards Chesbrough. They have their own self-- is to the 101 freeway, has no walls, was not granted security gates, and feel vulnerable to a lot of potential problems. We are the only exposed development along the 101 north from Calabasas to Ventura County with no protection, little to no vegetation, and no sound barrier for the, for the escalating traffic noises.
I need you to wrap your comments.
Okay, I am just wrapping right now.
Thank you.
As stated in Metro's description of sound walls and their purpose, sound walls absorb and reflect noise, acting as a barrier between the source of noise, such as the traffic on the highway, and a sensitive receptor such as a residential community. This describes our development. We ask respectfully for your help in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Laura Lenninger, followed by Bart Lenninger.
Hello, I'm Laura Lenninger. I have been a resident of Agoura Hills for 20-something years and, and a resident on Lake Lindero Drive in Peacock Ridge for 17 years. We moved there 17 years ago. Our children, six children, were small. We moved to the end of the cul-de-sac, thinking that it would be a nice, quiet, safe place to raise our family. Imagine my surprise when I came out right before Thanksgiving and there's a double yellow line right up the middle of this cul-de-sac in a quiet neighborhood. It's ridiculous. Chris, your girls have been to my house. Mrs. Lopez, you walk your dog up a very healthy, steep hill, I don't know if it's the steepest hill in Agoura. It's not a major thoroughfare, and the double yellow lines do not make sense. They are not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhoods with, with Morrison Ranch or Lake Lindero or Hillrise, any of these neighborhoods. They don't have double yellow lines. And it's ludicrous to have a double yellow line going up to the very top of a cul-de-sac. It's crazy. Also, they have, there's a, not a through-street sign. We are the first street that when you leave your Buena Elementary, there's Lake Lindero Drive that crosses Reyes Adobe. We're the very first street. And often, there will be cars that will drive up to the top of the cul-de-sac looking for a thorough, looking for a way through to get over to the other side of the city. And it happens frequently. I think it's going to happen more with these double yellow lines, because now it does look like a through-street. Even though there's a little sign that says not a through-street, we still get a number of cars that go up there, and I don't want it to get any worse. I think that it changes our, our neighborhood. It doesn't look like a small-town neighborhood anymore, and we want the lines removed, completely erased off the street. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bart Lenninger, followed by Dennis Damiano.
Mayor Anstad and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Bart Lenninger. I'm a resident on Lake Lindero Drive. I wanted, I'm here to, I'm opposed to the lines that have been placed on that street. And a little bit about my background, I'm a professional engineer. I work primarily on environmental impact reports for projects, so I'm very familiar with working with traffic engineers on these things. And we've been in contact with the city on this particular problem, and we were told that the, the lines were put in there to calm the traffic, to slow some of the traffic down. The statement made to us is a correct statement, but it's completely taken out of context. What has been done is lines have been installed to just plain irritate residents on the street. Lines are effective when you have long, straight, wide roads. Those have calming effects. Lake Lindero Drive is a quarter-mile long. It is a very short street. Also, there's some guidance that was issued by Caltrans back in January of 2022 suggesting calming techniques, and not one of them is stripe the road to, to slow things down. They recommend putting roundabouts, pedestrian crossways, a whole host of things. But they recommend at the very beginning, they say, "Traffic calming needs should be determined by existing operating vehicle speeds, volume counts, and the number of crashes for each location." I would argue there hasn't been a single accident on Lake Lindero Drive on the portion of street where it's been, it's been striped. Final, finally, another opinion by an engineer, basically suggesting the exact opposite about putting stripes on the road, and I quote, "Streets without any road striping create an environment where there is some ambiguity on who should and where, and I believe that encourages lower speeds and more caution on the part of drivers. There is limited hard research on this topic, but what is available supports this concept. Center lines may make it safer for cars that, to avoid head-on collisions at nighttime, but they are not common on low-volume residential streets, or for streets where the traffic volume is less than 6,000 per day, and most residential streets will have volumes well below this level." In other words, we have a residential street here. Having the, the lines there may encourage higher speeds, and as my wife stated at the beginning, may cause additional traffic, which creates additional hazards for small children that may be playing in the cul-de-sac. I ask the city council to look into this matter in detail, and I would strongly urge them to remove the lines so that, so that the Lake Lindero Drive can return to what it was, a quiet residential street. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis Damiano, followed by Andrew Gardner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, interested parties. My name is Dennis Damiano, and I'm here with regard to the striping also. I've resided on Lake Lindero Drive for 35 years. To my knowledge, there has never been an injury collision, vehicle collision on that street. My concern, not only is the yellow striping, which is totally unnecessary for an area in a residential neighborhood that has never experienced any kind of traffic problems, but my issue to start with is, how did this all come about? I tried to find out, and I, I went to City Hall, and a city contract traffic engineer, Laura Fornash, Fornash, contacted me by email and stated that she would talk to me yesterday afternoon with regard to the striping and how it came about and whatever background she might have. Well, it's Wednesday evening, I haven't heard from her. She's the one that made the telephonic appointment, and yet I did not get the information. However, a neighbor did supply me with a public works subcommittee memorandum dated August 19, 2022, which does give me some information. And this has to do with the traffic calming and striping on Lake Lindero. The first paragraph of this memo says, "The city was contacted regarding installation of speed humps." Contacted? Who? How? If the city was contacted, why wasn't the first thing they did, since the last thing they did was contact the Peacock Ridge Homeowners Association, why wasn't that the first thing they did to find out what the association felt about the traffic in the area and if anything needed to be done? This goes on to say that a data search was done in June of 2022, yet the association wasn't informed of the striping until two weeks before it was done in October. The findings were that the average speeds were approximately 34, 33 miles an hour in a 25-mile posted zone with a daily vehicle volume of 377 vehicles. That amounts to 16 vehicles an hour. Those 16 vehicles, 15 of which are probably residents of Lake Lindero Drive, they know how to drive on their street. 35 years without an accident. The, the report goes on to cite the 85th percentile, which is done in traffic studies by the National Traffic Institute and also Caltrans. Basically, that information that was provided, at least this minimal information in this report, would-- the speed posted on Lake Lindero Drive. I don't advocate that. I think everything is fine, but if anybody learns or looks into what the 85th percentile is all about, that is a study which is done periodically by Caltrans to review what posted speed limits are. It doesn't apply by Caltrans to residential streets, but only to the public streets. But using it, since it is cited in this report, this is very good evidence that the driving on the street is satisfactory. Caltrans and the National Traffic Institute have found that driving in the 85th percentile, especially by residential drivers, shows that they are driving at what they believe to be the fastest, safest speed to get to their destination. That's been shown to be true for the past 35 years. I would ask--
I've got to ask you to, you could wrap it up just--
I will wrap it up right now. I would ask the council to review the findings of the subcommittee and the necessity of the unwanted lines and ask that they be removed. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Andrew Gardner, followed by Hooman Lahudi.
All right. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to keep it short and sweet here. I too am a resident in Peacock Ridge, along with my fellow neighbors. I support all the points that have been made so far, and although I can't really speak to the technicalities of the study and the end result, I agree with what Dennis said. I can speak to a feeling, which I think everybody could resonate with. We moved from Sherman Oaks to Agoura Hills just last year, and we've got two small toddlers. We live right next to Bart and Laura at the top of the hill. We love the neighborhood and the city because of the homey and neighborhood feeling that it gave us. And then to walk out, like Laura said, just before Thanksgiving, and see double yellows painted up the street that you just moved on was a bit alarming, and of course, you're wondering, you know, why did this happen? Where did this come from, et cetera? I do not support the fact that we weren't notified of the study or the end result. My concern primarily is that it reduces the neighborhood feeling of our community and ultimately, you know, potentially turns future buyers off and therefore decreases home values, which affects everybody in the neighborhood. And to that, thank you again for letting me speak, and I do not support the lines, and I request that they be removed. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Hooman Lahudi, followed by Daniel Bennett.
Good evening. Just like Mrs. Klein, here on behalf of the terraces at Agoura Hills regarding the sound wall. As a homeowner in the community for the last seven years and Agoura Hills for the last 20 years or so, and kind of been living through the increasing sound decibels as seems like traffic and congestion has increased over time to where it's become a matter of quality of life kind of a thing with regards to the sound level. As you know, our community is adjacent, right adjacent, next to the freeway. So also, as a board member of, of our HOA, representing the 24 homes and the member, every single member of that community that has always and has continued to kind of have the same-- issues with quality of life and the sound wall and the sound that comes from the freeway. And also, as a, as a realtor in the community, I've had, of course, transactions within our own community as a listing agent, as a selling agent, and I cannot begin to tell you the stories of the potential buyers coming and even at times finding how the proximity is and the sound to the homes that they're coming to see that are listed, turning right around and leaving, and when you follow up, they say, "The sound is just too much to bear." So, you know, once again, sounds like from San Fernando Valley going all the way up north to Ventura County, I believe we are potentially now the only community without a sound wall that's suffering from the sound issues that the community is suffering from. So I believe the ask is, Metro has asked for collaboration with the city, especially regarding some funding and so on, and I don't know all the details about it. I believe Mrs. Klein has possibly communicated all of that, but once again, hopefully you guys will consider working with Metro on this subject. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Bennett, followed by Bill Lazarus.
Is the podium tall enough for me? Can you hear me? Okay, great, guys. So, again, I want to, I'm here for the yellow lines also, and I just want to speak a few words. First of all, thank you for this opportunity. I've been in the neighborhood for 20 years. I live at the end of the cul-de-sac also, and I agree with all of my neighbors in terms of the comments that they've made. I actually work from home, so I get an opportunity to sort of monitor traffic because my office is on the street. And since the lines have gone in, I have definitely noticed an increase in the volume and speed of the cars. Cars come whipping around, thinking that it's a thoroughfare, that it's not a dead-end cul-de-sac, and which is obviously completely ironic considering what the intent was. So, and again, just like what Andrew was saying, I really feel that the neighbor environment has really diminished as a result of this. I am concerned about the prices also and everything that's been commented on. So I am in favor of removing the lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments?
Our next speaker is Bill Lazarus, followed by Marvin Natlin.
Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me with a mask. So yeah, I am with the terraces community and also on the homeowners association, and I'm not going to repeat everything that Mrs. Klein and Mr. Lahudi shared. I would just echo that and say, having lived there in the community for over seven years, the quality of the homes are well-built, double-pane windows, but increasingly over the years, the sound has gotten so much worse that in the heat of the summer, you don't want to open your windows and, you know, other points during the year. So it is very intrusive. I think there's a lot of rationale to really literally close the gap. The neighborhood does not feel as protected as other parts of the community. We've had a plane crash right there on the freeway. We've had other accidents. We had the fire jump. My family and I were there and vacated right before that happened, and it feels more vulnerable to traffic accidents, to impacts. And then just exposure and visibility. There have been recent robberies along Cannon Road, and the, the articles noted, you know, the ease of access on and off the freeway, and it just feels like we're kind of very visible and exposed there. So I would ask those points be considered as well and that we could help work together to partner with the respective organizations and close the gap. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marvin Natlin.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing me this evening. My name is Marvin Natlin. My wife Linda and I live at 6089 Lake Lindero Drive. One recent morning, I went out in front of my home and to my surprise, saw a double-yellow line painted on the street out there. The street looked like it could be a thoroughfare. And at the bottom, there was already a stop sign on a pole and one painted on the ground at Reyes Adobe Road. Now, in addition, there's also a new slowdown sign that has been posted on a pole, only a short block from the stop sign, and both double-yellow lines as well as broken-yellow lines going up the street as well. And it all sounds to me like a bit much considering the nature of the street. I drove around the neighborhood, and not another street in all Peacock Ridge had double-yellow ones, or any lines for that matter. Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lake, and Lindero Canyon both have heavy traffic, had only broken white lines. Why was our street singled out, different from all the others in the development? Were there many car accidents on the street? Well, as the others have mentioned, none in the 21 years that we've lived there. Do yellow lines improve the street's appearance? Not possible. Will they be a plus for property values? That's also not possible. Will they cause anyone looking to buy a house on that street to be concerned? I know that I would be. Do yellow lines even cause you to slow down? They're not meant to stop you, they're not meant to slow you down, just to keep lane. So how does this affect the property owners who've invested greatly in our homes for both immediate pride and possible sale in the future? How does it affect insurance when evaluators come around and think, for some reason, this must be, excuse me, a busier traffic street than all the others in the development? I wonder why. I'll ask you, how would you feel coming out of your home one morning and seeing yellow stripes running the entire length of your street? And when you ask about them, the response was, "I don't know." So the HOA should have questioned the owners of the homes, getting their positions before agreeing to have the yellow stripe painted lines appearing in an important manner for homeowners living on Lake Lindero Drive. We were not consulted and should have asked for our input and weren't. From what we've learned from a number of our neighbors, they weren't. And they, as you have heard here this evening, would, excuse me, would like them removed. We have some pictures along with us, which I can turn over for you to take a look at, very simplistic pictures, but it'll give you an idea of what a residential street, I'm sure you all live on something very similar, looks like when yellow lines are painted on that street and know of the street in the entire development. You've got to be questioning why this could be, and it shouldn't be. Besides that, the road is in disrepair anyway.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We have no further public comment cards, but I will defer to staff to see if we have any remote participants via Zoom. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Thank you. I first, I want to let everybody that's here know that because this is not on the agenda, that we can't comment from the podium on the issues, but I would ask that everybody from the, the sound wall to the yellow stripes issue, if, if you could at least get with somebody on staff in the next day, I would say. First of all, also, I want to say, obviously, everybody up here on the, on the podium heard what you all had to say, and so it will be something that we, we will look into, but again, we can't really make any comments concerning that issue. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add one more thing?
Sure.
Yes, just wanted to reiterate that we, I have no doubt that staff will follow up with those who spoke about the double-yellow line, and I also just wanted to let the HOA members know that I do have this on a list of things to discuss for our budget workshop that's coming up in a few months, so I encourage you to stay in contact with me, with other council members, and with our staff, and come back and give a similar comments when we're actually deciding budget and staff time and things like that. Encourage you to keep going.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Any other comments? Okay. All right. I again want to thank everybody for being here on those issues. We're going to now move forward with our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, and this section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. For council member attendees, please submit a public comment card to the city clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. We respectfully request that if you have something to distribute to the council, you hand it to our city clerk and do not approach the dais. I will now defer to the city clerk for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. We have not received any public comments, or we do not have any speaker cards, and so will now defer to staff for any remote participants. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
I will now, are there any questions from the City Council members on the consent calendar?
I have one comment, actually two comments. We don't need to poll them, but I just would like to thank Kristi Trolson for all her efforts on item number two on the consent calendar. I think she just stepped out, but I wanted to really thank her for her work on that. And also wanted to say a thank you to everyone who applied for our planning commission appointments. We saw, I think, more applications this year than I've seen certainly even before I was on the council. It was something I kept an eye on, very encouraging, and want to thank everyone who applied and hope that even if you have not been chosen, that you continue to be in touch with us to see how you can best serve the city. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of those who applied. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the City Council? All right. I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Will the maker of the motion and the second state your names?
Councilmember Buckley Weber moves to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Councilmember Wolf will second.
I will now defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead, you have approval five to zero.
All right. So passes. Our next item is ordinance
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt, I just want to congratulate, now that the action's taken place. I see that several of the new incoming planning commissioners are here. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for being here tonight as well. So our next item is to consider ordinance number 23-466, amending the 2022 California Building Standards Code to establish the City of Agora Hills Reach Code. I will now defer to building official Lucas Quatch for the staff presentation.
This is exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable City Council members and general public. My name is Lucas Quatch. I'm the city building official. It is an honor to be here tonight at this first city council meeting of the new year to present to you the City of Agora Hills Reach Code ordinance. The City of Agora Hills is committed to providing a more livable, equitable, and economically vibrant community through the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. In April of last year, the city council adopted the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, also known as CAP, to strengthen the city's commitment to climate action and sustainability. Staff was directed to develop policy and programs to reduce reliance on fossil fuels and build sustainability during climate change. Staff worked with ID360, a consultant firm on green building policy, to develop the proposed City of Agora Hills Reach Code. Now I would like to introduce Ms. Melanie Jacobson, principal consultant with ID360, who will give the presentation on the proposed Reach Code.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, and honorable council members, members of the community, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. So we've been supporting city staff as the Reach Code consultant since April of 2022, and tonight we're going to be sharing the proposed green building Reach Code ordinance, and we look forward to receiving your questions and comments on these policy issues. So we'll start now by sharing the outline for the presentation. First, we will, we'll set the foundation for tonight's policy with a background of building electrification and Reach Codes. Secondly, we will provide an overview of the proposed green building ordinance scope and requirements. This includes the all-electric building requirements for new buildings, as well as the electric vehicle or EV charging requirements for new construction. We will then prompt council discussion with the recommendations in the staff report. Next slide, please. We'd like to preface the Reach Code background with a brief introduction to concepts related to building electrification and decarbonization. This sets the stage for the why behind Reach Codes that prioritize electrification and efficiency. So what is building electrification? Building electrification is a simple concept, and it's all about using electric appliances and equipment, such as induction cooking, heat pump water heaters in our homes and businesses. And electrification is one strategy that supports decarbonization efforts, similar to energy efficiency, renewable energy, and managed electricity loads. Reach Codes typically focus on energy efficiency and electrification. Electric appliances still perform the same job or service as gas-fueled appliances. However, they bring about more benefits than gas-fueled appliances or systems. This includes improved indoor air quality, the ability to use carbon-free energy sources, and even job creation, and we'll explore some of these benefits in the next slides. So building electrification has been found to offer many financial, health, and environmental benefits. Recent studies have shown that electric appliances are better for indoor air quality, which directly impacts our health. For example, a recent study by the Rocky Mountain Institute, RMI, found that children growing up in homes with gas stoves have an increased risk of developing asthma, and that switching to electric stoves, such as induction, can eliminate these invisible pollutants that come from burning natural gas in the home. Electric appliances, such as heat pump water heaters, are more efficient than their gas counterparts, which can save money in energy costs. Studies have also identified electrification as the lowest-cost, lowest-risk way to achieve a carbon-free source of energy. This includes electrification of buildings and vehicles when compared to other fuel sources, such as biofuels, hydrogen, and gas. There is also a substantial cost savings to avoid gas infrastructure and to maintain the gas grid. Finally, decarbonization efforts increase greatly when electric appliances are powered by clean and renewable energy sources, such as the case in Agora Hills, where the city joined the local CCA, the Clean Power Alliance, in 2019. Homes and businesses in the city are powered by renewable energy through the Clean Power So because the purpose is to electrify, we, we need to understand where California's current gas usage is. As shown on the pie charts here, gas usage is predominantly in water heating and space heating for both residential and non-residential building stock, followed by cooking, pool heating, and clothes drying on the residential side. In some non-residential buildings, there are processes, process uses, of natural gas, and these are shown in the miscellaneous column. The proposed Reach Code policy focuses on residential and non-residential end uses and electrifying those end uses in new construction. So luckily, So luckily, all, all electric buildings are already the majority of new construction built nationally. Sixty percent of new construction homes in the United States use electric space heating, and during which, and this, and during this time, only, only forty percent of those were heat pumps. Fifty-five percent already use electric water heating, sixty-two percent use electric cooking, and seventy-five percent use electric clothes drying. So this highlights that we have the technology, appliances, and the trade knowledge to continue this trend. So this slide shows what some of these appliances and systems look like for residential and commercial building types. This is also what we are seeing in the market related to electrification. So heat pump space heating, shown on the left, can look like these appliances here. A heat pump is basically a reversible air conditioner. The second column shows heat pumps for water heating. And finally, in the third column, we have the preferred method for electrification and energy efficiency is called induction. And we're not talking about the old coil stoves. We're talking about a newer technology on the market called induction, where heat is actually transferred into the cookware rather than combusting gas. And commercial applications for induction do exist as well. And lastly, there are also electric alternatives for clothes drying, which include heat pump technology. So equipment efficiency is really important to keep in mind when comparing electric appliances to natural gas appliances. Efficiency of our gas appliances is, on average, about eighty percent. If you have an existing storage water tank in your home, this is probably, probably closer to sixty percent efficient, while the newest condensing hot water heaters are about ninety to ninety-five percent efficient. However, comparatively, heat pumps are three hundred and fifty percent more efficient. Heat pumps move heat from one place to another, and it doesn't actually combust, which allows it to get such a high percentage of efficiency. So resistance and induction technology, the max efficiency, is about one for cooking and high-intensity industrial processes. So the next few slides will go over some background information related to Reach Codes, as well as a brief background of the Reach Code development history within the City of Agora Hills. So now we're going to talk a little bit about the Reach Code background. So first, the California building code cycle plays a role in the development of the process of developing a Reach Code. Every three years in California, the building codes are updated. The 2022 building code became effective on January 1st, 2023. Reach Codes effectively reach beyond the mandatory requirements of the statewide California building code. Electrification and energy efficiency Reach Codes typically amend the California Energy Code and the California Green Building Standards Code. The Reach Code development efforts stemmed from strategic goals outlined in the city's Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan, or CAP, aims to develop these policies and programs to reduce reliance on fossil fuels. It also has strategies to require all-new residential developments to achieve a hundred percent electrification with, with exceptions, as well as strategies to consider for mandates or incentives for developers that also provide a hundred percent electrification for new commercial developments. All of these strategies support the city's goal to decrease greenhouse gas emissions through increasing clean energy use. So the community, the community outreach and the stakeholder input is, is a very important part of the Reach Code development process. The city held a community engagement meeting that was held as a hybrid meeting on June 7th of 2022. Additionally, the city developed an energy Reach Code website with resources, and the live recording of the workshop is available there online. Staff also met with the Environmental Responsibility Subcommittee on a couple of different occasions to discuss policy and potential exceptions. The staff report includes details of the feedback and considerations raised by the community and stakeholders during the outreach process. This slide highlights some of the common pieces of feedback that staff heard. So the first comment looks at the suggestions that the city provide or promote incentives over mandates to encourage development and business in this area, particularly for existing buildings. Staff, staff also heard requests that the policy include exemptions for businesses such as commercial kitchens and laboratories. Community members also asked the city to provide additional education on the health, environmental benefits of, of electrification and, and efficiency. And lastly, one of the most common concerns received revolved around frequency of power outages and electricity demand. SCE has publicly expressed their support for building electrification and local decarbonization efforts happening in this service territory. At the community meeting, an SCE representative, representative also attended to respond to questions and concerns from the community around demand and capacity. SCE's biggest concern for, is for any new building, whether it's mixed fuel or all-electric, and also having enough lead time during the planning phase of a project to ensure there is enough power to service that building. Another concept around Reach Codes is cost effectiveness. So cost effectiveness studies are not required for all electric amendments made to the CalGreen code. However, they're an important tool when making policy decisions. Local Reach Code ordinances that amend the California Energy Code and require enhanced efficiency above state standards must go through the CEC review process and approval. Published in preliminary study results find majority of all-electric prototype buildings to be cost-effective in Agora Hills. Based on previous direction from council, feedback from the community, and the city's climate action goals, staff has drafted the proposed green building Reach Code ordinance for the City of Agora Hills for council's consideration. So now that we've gone over some of the background information, the next slides will highlight the proposed green building Reach Code scope and requirements. The proposed green building Reach Code ordinance has two main components. The first requires all-electric building. The second requires EV charging infrastructure beyond the 2022 CalGreen requirements. The impacts, the, the ordinance impacts all-new construction and the building occupancy types that are outlined under new construction. It does not impact existing buildings. So this, this slide shows the all-electric new construction requirements. The ordinance simply requires that newly constructed buildings shall be designed and constructed as all-electric buildings. This means that a new building must contain no combustion equipment or plumbing for combustion, for combustion equipment serving space heating, including fireplaces, water heating, cooking appliances, including barbecues, and clothes drying within the building or the property lines, and instead uses electric heating appliances for service. However, there are a limited number of exceptions for new residential projects, and limited exceptions for not, new non-residential projects, and we will review these in the next slides. The exceptions for new residential and new non-residential buildings differ. This slide shows the proposed residential exceptions. These exceptions came out of the feedback from the outreach meetings, the Environmental Responsibility Subcommittee, and the statewide utility program model Reach Code for the 2022 code cycle. The proposed exceptions include swimming pools and spas, attached ADUs and JADUs. And the policy intent here is to apply to new attached ADUs that are attached to existing buildings. The exceptions apply to rebuilding of existing residential units after a natural disaster, such as wildfire, flood, earthquake, et cetera. Multifamily residential buildings, building projects that have been, have approved entitlement before the effective date may use fuel, gas, for water heating systems. The last exception is bolded as an action item for council to potentially provide direction on, since there was not a consensus for including or excluding this exception between the ERC members. This exception is only relevant for cities that have not previously adopted an electrification Reach Code, and thus may have entitled projects that are not governed by the Reach Code. The intent of the, of this exception is to avoid costly design changes for housing developments, which may likely, would, which likely would only occur with central water heating systems. We're now going to move on to new non-residential construction. The next two slides highlight the proposed non-residential exceptions. The first is known as an infeasibility exception, where if the applicant demonstrates that is, that it is physically or technically infeasible to build without fuel, gas, infrastructure, the local enforcing agency may grant a modification. The second is a provision that says natural gas for certain end uses can be used when no all-electric alternatives is commercially available or viable. In particularly, in particular, this extends to backup power, where backup power for critical facilities necessary to protect public health or safety in the event of an electric grid outage. The last two non-residential exceptions proposed in the ordinance are for swimming pools and spas and laboratory spaces. These exceptions were common during the 2019 code cycle, and other jurisdictions have carried it over to the 2022 Reach Codes. Council may also note that there is language in the non-residential section of the proposed ordinance that stipulates that certain end uses that receive an approved exemption are allowed on a revocable basis until exempted uses no longer exist in the building. When the gas end use no longer serves the building, the gas infrastructure must be capped, which means terminated or removed. And this includes the gas meter. This responsibility falls on the entity who receives the entitled exemption. So we just talked about building electrification, and now we're going to move on to talking about EV infrastructure, which is related to electric vehicle charging. It's all resides in the same ordinance, but it's a different subject area. So as mentioned previously, the second component relates to EV infrastructure. So before we get into proposed EV code requirements, we're briefly going to go over some of these key terms here, shown with the, the images that you see on the slide. So the main three components for EV charging are three, threefold: speed, readiness, and the number of parking spaces. So you'll see on the left-hand side, level one, level two, and level three. So to give you some context of what this means, level one, level two, level three is the speed at which the charger gets charged. So level one is three to four miles per charging hour. Level two is ten to twenty miles per char, charging hour, and level three is a hundred and fifty miles per charging hour. Both level one and level two chargers are pretty common in every home. Level two is often served by a clothes washing and drying plug. So that's ready to go in most homes. And now there are different terms for what we call EV readiness. So there, the, the terms that you see on the slide are EV capable, EV ready, and EV charging station. So an EV capable space is a sense, is essentially physical space at your electrical panel and conduit, which is just empty tubing, that is, that goes directly from the panel to the parking space, so that in the future, it can be turned into a EV charger with little barrier to entry. The next level up is the EV ready space. And what that does is it, it takes it to the next level by putting the wires and the receptacle inside the conduit and puts a breaker in the panel. For level two, the, for a level two to work, the driver has to bring their own charger and plug it into the receptacle. EV capable spaces with EVSE are considered complete electric vehicle charging stations. So this is what you would see at typically a commercial location, or sometimes residential, where the full charger is installed and ready to be used by a, a charger. So these are really key terms. And then the final column talks about the number of parking spaces that are going to be subject to the requirements in columns one and two. So these are really important items to introduce as we're going to get into where these are going to apply to in the code in the following slides. So the proposed Reach Code requirements for new single-family and new two-family dwellings is shown here on the slide. So projects would need to provide a dedicated 208, 240-volt branch circuit installed in a listed raceway, and one EV ready space required. The 2022 CalGreen baseline standards require an EV capable space only for new, new residential, single-family, and two-family dwellings. So this, this slide breaks down the multifamily residential EV charging requirements for new construction. So new multifamily hotel and motels must provide the following: ten percent EV capable spaces, which, that can support the level two EVSE, and then thirty-five percent EV ready spaces to support level two EVSE. And then the, the next level for new, new multifamily hotel and motel dwellings over twenty dwelling units would need to provide ten percent EV capable spaces for level two EVSE, thirty-five percent EV ready spaces to support level two EVSE, and then ten percent EV chargers, so the fully installed EV charging system. So the city's proposed Reach Code goes above the percentage threshold for each of those residential scenarios. So, so the fall, this table that you're seeing here shows the proposed Reach Code requirements for all-new non-residential construction. The 2022 CalGreen requirements for non-residential buildings with over two hundred spaces, I'll, I'll point you down to the bottom there, are twenty percent EV capable spaces and twenty-five percent EV charging installed. And you'll also notice at the top of the table, while new non-residential buildings with nine or less spaces are not required to provide any level of EV spaces. So the city's proposed Reach Code for non-residential requires thirty percent EV capable spaces, and thirty-three percent of, of the EV capable spaces must be provided with an EV charger or an EVSE. So where the number of required EVS, EVCS, the, the capable space in column three counts towards the total number of required EV capable spaces shown in column two. So thank you, council members and members of the community for receiving our presentation today. So staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and then adopt the ordinance. Staff also seeks direction on exception two that we went over in the presentation. And if it pleases the council, we're ready to answer your questions and address the feedback you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have questions on the staff presentation? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I don't really have a question, but we may have just lost our planning commission. They all left. This is very technical. It's very hard work, and you did a great presentation, so I have no questions, though.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you. Yes, I have a couple of questions. When you were considering exemptions for residential, I see that you've exempted swimming pools and spas. And the reason for that- And the reason for that being that, that the technical equipment isn't yet up to speed for it to be all-electric, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So these model codes that are published by the state of California for cities to adopt, they are designed and to reflect, you know, what's happening in the market and what available technology, but also having the trades be ready to receive those. So at this time, that particular trade is not as familiar with this new technology. There's a number of workforce elements happening with the counties are, are participating in that, but it's not quite as advanced as the others.
Right. And then Louis was very kindly met with me earlier to discuss some of this, and I was interested to see what other local cities are doing. And I noticed in Ventura County, they are still allowing fire, outdoor fireplaces, fire pits, and grills to be gassed. Was that considered?
Yeah, so the, the process, the process for, do you want to take that one? Okay.
Yeah, so during the development of the code, staff met with the environmental subcommittee, responsibility subcommittee, and those issues or those topics were presented. And it's, I think the wish or the direction of the environmental subcommittee was to include those as required.
That's, so no more gas outside. I mean, I'm just wondering why, I understand completely why we want all-electric inside because of the unseen pollution that comes from having gas appliances that could be leaking gas all the time, and we don't even know it. But when we're outside, I don't think that applies, and I'm just wondering if we have to be that stringent with outside fireplaces and fire pits and built-in barbecues. I would, I would just like that to be discussed. Thank you.
Any other council members? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Following up on Councilmember Sylvester's question about swimming pools and spas, so if a new, either resident, commercial or residential building were to be built, does the exemption of swimming pool, or let's say on the commercial side, a restaurant or something like that exempt the entire property or just that piece?
Yes, the exemption only applies to what we call an end use where the, the, the item is being serviced.
Okay, so in the example of a hotel being built, if a hotel is being built and it's got, say, 100 rooms and one restaurant and one swimming pool, how does that play out electric versus gas? You're saying the rooms, all of the heating, the water, all of that would be electric for everything except the restaurant and the swimming pool?
Yes, that is the intent.
Okay. Okay. And when, under non-residential, where it says that if it, if, if there's an argument that the, the building needs gas because it's just impossible to use electric in the situation, it says local enforcement agency can grant a modification. What is the local agency? Is it the planning director? Is it a planning commission? Is it city council? Who decides whether someone gets a modification?
Yes, so typically, and in every city we've worked with, it's typically the building official that would work on that, that particular exemption. And there's a common kind of infeasibility guideline that we can reference, that we've referenced, that is, shows a protocol for using the alternative means and methods request in the, outlined in the building code, just to look for situations where it, it just wouldn't apply.
Okay, so it's just pretty much a black and white if it fits? It's not a discretionary decision by any elected or appointed body?
Yes, as it stands.
As it stands, okay. Hold on, I have a couple more questions. I have to understand my notes. In the approaches in our packet, not so much in the presentation, but in our packet, there were various different approaches to do this ordinance. There were five different options. Can you just explain a little bit why we're choosing option number three, I believe it is? Approach, sorry, not option. Approach three, all-electric required, is a little bit different than approach four, which is an all-electric municipal ordinance, and approach five, which is electric only plus efficiency. I understand that one and two are not really, approaches one and two are not really applicable, but if you can explain the nuances maybe between those last three and why, why we're going with the option that you're recommending?
Yes. One moment while I get that looked up. Okay. So fundamentally, the, the goal of the, the direction in the climate action plan was to electrify new construction within the city. So that was the fundamental goal. So when we develop reach codes, we have to take a look at what the goal is. So that, when there are goals around enhanced efficiency, so energy efficiency, energy efficiency is like an energy efficient measure, like a window or insulation, so a measure for a reach code around energy efficiency goes beyond what's called the California Energy Code. If there is simply a, what we call fuel switch, which is from gas to electric, it's not necessarily a requirement to amend the California Energy Code. So amending the California Energy Code is a very robust process that is very lengthy and takes quite a bit of effort to do. Approach number three, which is, is what's the recommendation, basically bypasses that process by using the California Green Building Standards Code to simply use, to change the fuel source. Now, if the, the reach code had certain energy efficiency components to it that were in, that were above and beyond the state, we would have to go through the California Energy Commission. However, the, since the ordinance doesn't have that, we're able to use this option three, which is a preferred regulatory process and ease of use, ease of implementation.
Okay, so we don't have to go through the CEC, but we do have to revisit this basically every three years?
Yes, just...
Yes, but if you amend the, the energy code as well, if you do that, you also will need to go back, it'll be three years as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I guess the biggest question I have is for the committee, if you can maybe go into a little bit of detail as to the other decision that we need to make on entitled projects, basically what the discussion was, and did, did you disagree, the two of you, or did you want to bring it for a full discussion? We just would know a little bit more background on what we all need to be discussing about that.
I'm happy to start with that, Mr. Mayor. So we, my position, and, and Mayor Anstead didn't necessarily agree with me, the, the, once a, a building project has the entitlements, the one issue was is that they'd already made the size of the closet that would hold the water heater, that was specifically it. And so if it already had entitlements and then we, the, the ordinance applied to them, they would have to make the closet a little bigger to hold the electric water heater, and therefore they would have to redesign the project. My thought on it, initially I thought, well, that seems onerous to the developer, but then it became like, so what does having entitlements mean? And how do we define that? And what if a building does, a developer doesn't build his building and he loses his entitlements to, or he waits five years? And what does that do for our staff and for people who have to enforce this ordinance? And it seemed to me that, you know, change is always difficult, and, you know, I don't even know if there's any projects right now that have entitlements. I don't know the answer to that, but it seems like to keep things clean and sharp and not easier for our staff, but just more understandable. You know how there's, just, it's going to be a very gray area, and we don't want to have problems down the road, especially if it's a fairly large residential project, that now they are bringing gas in to every unit? And again, it's inside the unit because we didn't want them to go back and redesign and put an extra couple of foot or so in the, I, I don't even know if I'm using the right language to call it a closet, but wherever you keep your water heater. And so it just seemed that, you know, it's kind of like pulling off the Band-Aid and, you know, just doing this now and, and having it, having it be enforceable and just, you know, I don't even know, you know, at what point this ordinance would actually become our law, because it takes three readings and there could be changes, you know, whatever's going to happen is going to happen, and it just seemed like, let's, let's just do it now. So that was my position. And it was just a slight disagreement, and, and I think we both understand both points of view, and we thought this was something that was going to, and neither of us would give, so we had to come to the three, to the other three of you. But it had been a long meeting and it's truly technical, so.
And I think, or I just want to make sure, are you, any other comments before? Okay, no problem. I think my comment would be first, actually, I would like to ask the question that Mayor Protem Buckley-Weber asked. Do we currently have any multifamily residential buildings that are, are, have approved entitlements? Or I don't know who would answer that question.
I think Denise, the community development director, is on the call, on the remote. Denise?
I can answer the question. Okay. If you're not happy, that does not mean that there's some of the pipeline.
Hello, can I hear you?
That was one of my, I mean, my, my big questions, and I appreciate you answering that.
Are you there, Denise?
Yeah, we can hear you, Denise, I think.
I'm here, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you hear me?
Yes.
Barely.
Okay. Sorry, I'm away at training, I'm trying my best. The, right now, we don't have any projects that are scheduled for hearing in the next, in the next few months. The ordinance would have to go through a second read, and then after the second read, it generally takes 30 days for the ordinance to become effective. If within that 30, that 60-day period or 45-day period, we can, we have a project that goes to planning commission, then it's possible that you could have one, but right now, we don't have any. But with our affordable housing overlay, it's possible that there could be a project that comes through over the counter, so it's really a difficult question to ask, to answer.
Okay, thank, thank you. And I think, go ahead.
Keep in mind, I can't quite remember when our environmental subcommittee meeting was last held, but it's been a while. So we were like, that was part of my view, you know, like, we need to hurry up if we're, you know, and get this going. It's been months, so by the time this would happen, it could be as long as seven or eight months, and there could be entitlements.
Okay, those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, I, Lucas, we, we talked, we discussed this, but I, I want to ask this question in the, on the council chambers regarding strain on the grid and commitments that SCE has made to improving our infrastructure and how we can articulate that to, to residents? And is there, the question really is, is there a timeline or anything that we can guarantee that there will be upgrades, that this will not put an additional strain on the grid or demand that's not able to be met?
Well, I can try to answer that, but I think we might have a representative from SCE who can articulate your, your answer a lot better. Can we patch Josh on?
Hi there, this is Joshua Torres with Southern California Edison. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. So each new development is taken as a separate project, so it really is incumbent on the developers to make sure that they file an application with our local service center in a timely fashion. We, we can say that making a project all-electric will not have a significant impact on the availability of power, but it's really going to depend on the specific circuit and, you know, what, and the size of the project and how much capacity is available on that project or on that circuit. So it really is a case-by-case basis. We are working across our service territory to expedite our, our new service interconnection process, but again, it, it does depend on the project, and it's really, really important for new development to submit an application as early as possible so we can avoid any delays in getting them online.
Does that suffice your, your answer?
Yes, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions of staff before we move on?
Could I just follow up on what you just said? So if I understand that properly, if you have, say, a new development with, say, 100 units, I'm just throwing that out there, and you go to SCE and they say, oh, sorry, we don't have the capability at this point, what is the recourse for the development, developer then?
So it's going to depend on how, how long they're going to wait, and it's going to depend on, on what type of upgrades we're going to have to perform. So hopefully it's, you know, hopefully there's a little bit of available capacity and we can maybe offload some customers onto a neighboring circuit to free up capacity for that new development. In extreme situations where we have like really large development or people come in and build like thousands of homes, or we've had, you know, manufacturing facilities that want to pop up, you know, in a really short timeframe, you know, if we have to do major upgrades that, at the substation level, it, it could trigger a, a sequel review, in which case it could take years. But when we're, we're looking at like smaller developments, like, you know, less than 100 homes, typically that, that's not a concern, right? It's going to be handled at the circuit level. Hopefully, there's enough available capacity that we can, you know, move some customers around, offload them onto neighboring circuits and free up some capacity.
Okay. Any other comment, questions?
Also, if I may, and Mr. Quatch, or Ms. Jacobson can correct me if I'm wrong, that's, I think, one of the reasons why they, that staff had suggested exception number seven, which is it's physically or technically infeasible. So if you run into that situation where SCE says, we can't, you know, you can't build 100 units, then that seems to be pretty good grounds to provide that exception, hopefully in very limited circumstances. And then also from a timing perspective, I thought it'd be helpful to the council. So we're having first reading today, second reading would occur on January 25th, and then the ordinance would go into effect 30 days from January 25th, so roughly around, you know, February 25th, 26th was when it would go into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no other comments? We will, we will go ahead and move into public comments. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. We respectfully request that if you have something to distribute to the council, you hand it to our city clerk and do not approach the dais. I'll now defer to the city clerk for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. No written public comments have been received and no speaker cards have been submitted. However, we did receive written public comments via email that were distributed to the city council, and they were from Bennett List in Oak Park, Fran Pavley, Agoura Hells, F A T A N E H, Fatane, T A B A T A B A I, Tabatabay, Agoura Hells, and Hillary Waldinger and Alan Weiner, representing 350 Caneo San Fernando Valley. And so we'll defer to Amber for any remote participants via Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Thank you. Does any council member have any further questions or comments before we move into deliberations? All right, we'll go ahead and move into deliberations. I think I'm going to mix it up a little bit today, especially since we have an expert from the environmental subcommittee, Mayor Protem. from the environmental subcommittee, Mayor Protem Buckley-Weber. I'll let you start us off on the deliberations.
Well, I wish I could say I was an expert after sitting in all these meetings. And this has been a long process, as you all know, you, Debbie and Chris and I have been on the council, this has been going on for three years at least. So it's, we're working on the Climate Action Adaptation Plan and this ordinance is one part of it, but a really crucial and important part of it. And I call the electrification ordinance the low-hanging fruit because it's going to apply to future construction. It's all new, new residential and commercial construction. It is not, as I've heard in the community, we are not coming in and taking out your gas stove or your gas fireplace or your gas grill. That's all exempt for right now. We hope that when you need a new one, you'll look at ways to reduce greenhouse gases, but that's really the, the purpose of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan is to reduce greenhouse gases. I know we're a small city of only 20, 21,000 people, but this council has always been forward-thinking, and our last council, on that even though it's a tiny step for a very small city, it's a very important one. And we are following some, you know, wonderful cities around the state. We're ahead of our time, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, taken a little time to, to get here, but we're not that far ahead of our time. Everybody is coming around. And in fact, the California Air Resources Board has committed to a plan that will make California the first U.S. state to phase out all new gas-fueled furnaces and water heaters in home. So this is where we're going. This is, you know, there, there's no doubt about it. In LA City, you probably all know that LA City banned most gas appliances in new homes and other construction, joining New York, San Francisco and Seattle. So, you know, we're right up there with the big guys, but it's, you know, it's a really important part of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And like I said, I do think it's, you know, it's, it's a stat, state mandate to reduce greenhouse gases, by the way. It's not just like us sitting here going, hey, what a great idea, let's save the planet. It's actually been mandated by the state that we do this and we've taken it very seriously and we're supportive of it, or that's the way it's been the last few years. The, let's see, we've had public meetings, we've had public workshops, we've had public input, and so we've taken all of that information and tried to come up with the best reach code that, that we can, that will, you know, really be responsible and, you know, efficient, really. I mean, and that's one of the reasons I say pull off the Band-Aid and let's just do the hard work now, because it'll be, you know, better for our staff and for our code and to have everybody in this together. Again, already constructed homes are not subject to this ordinance. And in turning to recently, the LA Times this week did an article on the health element. And although that's always been a concern, it was probably, that was not the number one, I mean, it's not that it's not the number one concern, we've approached this by reduce the goal of reducing greenhouse gases. But the, the newest information coming out from the U.S. Consumer Product Safety is that these air pollutants such as carbon monoxide, nitrous, nitrogen dioxide and fine particle, particle matter are at levels that the EPA and the World Health Organization are saying are unsafe and, and linked to all kinds of illnesses. So having, just reading that again this week in the Times, just in the few years we've been working on this, the advancements of knowing the health effects of having natural gas in your home, which I have it in my home too, so, you know, it's an existing home and, and, you know, it's kind of frightening, but, you know, because if you have, the stove never, the gas stove never goes off. The gas fireplace never really goes off. It's always coming into your home. So it's really something that's important for the future, not only for the planet, but for our children and our future generations. It causes respiratory diseases and, and even there's been cases, you know, cancer and things like that. So to answer a couple of the questions though, about the swimming pools and the spas, I was really on the fence about that. But the technology is not really there. And so to tell a new homeowner or a new development that's coming up, and our developments aren't going to be 100 units, it might be, you know, 10, 15, 20 units at a time, you know, it's hot here. People want swimming pools and I would just hate to see somebody not put in a swimming pool because the technology's not really there for it to be electric. Now, in three years, we're hoping that that technology will be there because we've seen it with fireplaces, there's electrical inserts, we have seen it with electrical water heaters. So it is coming along and moving pretty quickly. And so hopefully three years when we revisit the code or we take another look at the reach codes, we can then take out that exemption. That would be what I would like to see as a goal, that hopefully three, and it's kind of out of our hands in terms of technology, but, you know, we'll be watching it closely to see if swimming pools and spas can fall, you know, that exemption can come out with. And again, I just say, you know, pull off the Band-Aid with the projects that have entitlements, they're not there yet. But as Denise was saying, you know, with the new housing overlay, we just don't know how quickly something can come in. It's not likely, but it could happen. And again, when Mayor Anstead and I were talking about this on the subcommittee level, you know, I was much more panicked because it was at least three or four months ago, might have been summer or late summer, and it seemed like this was going to, you know, we wanted to wait on these ordinance until our new council was on because at that point we were just going to do an appointment and then felt that, you know, there was an election coming, we, at that point, we knew that council member Weber was not seeking reelection. It seemed like the right thing to do that for the community, that their new representatives should be part of that, this discussion. So that's why it's on our first thing in January, but I hope that you'll support it. Again, I see it as the low-hanging fruit. We've talked about when we went to 100% at the CPA, that was low-hanging fruit. This really doesn't hurt anybody and it, it's, you know, there's, if there's nothing with entitlements right now, I think that, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, change is hard, but it'll be okay.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you. I agree with everything you've said. Actually, today I just read that the federal agency is considering a ban on gas stoves altogether in the United States, they announced. That's the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. So that may be coming down the pike anyway, which would, you know, have to be enforced. And the other thing I was shocked at when I saw this graph is that California is one of the few states that has over 60% gas stove tops. Some states have zero and most have 20%. So we've really got to cut back on those gas stove tops. So I, in full agreement there, and I, and again, with children's asthma and the leaking gas that I was never aware of before. So I've learned a lot this week. But I would like to just, again, say that, I would like to see maybe if we could still allow, and I didn't mention this before, also, some people have emergency gas generators so that if they lose electric, the, the gas generator kicks in and it supplies power to their essential things like fridges and if they have medical equipment, things like that. So I'd like us to consider that. And again, outdoor grills and fireplaces, if, if we could consider that as well.
So I meant to address that about the outdoor fireplaces and grills, and I appreciate you bringing that up because, again, this isn't just a health issue. It's about reduction of greenhouse gases, so we don't want gas to continue to be used. On gas grills, the gas is always on. So even though it might not be a health issue, it's still impacting the greenhouse gases in our community as well as the gas, what do you call them, fire pits, those kind of outdoor fireplaces. It's really the same issues, it's just that because it's outside, it might not have the health impacts, but it's still in terms of reducing greenhouse gases and moving forward and protecting the planet, it's, it's the same.
And what about the emergency generators?
You know, I think, wasn't there an exception? I think for the commercial, there's an exception and I would let staff talk about that.
Yes, so there, emergency backup generators can use natural gas and that's part of the exception. There's a, there's a part of the building code around critical facilities and that's one of the items that can be exempt because it's, it's, the intent of the ordinance is really to target energy that's being used on an ongoing basis and not necessarily backup power.
But it's not listed in the residential, it's only in the non-residential at the moment. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So could we include it in the, in the residential? If, if somebody wanted it, I mean, not, not just?
Yeah, if that is the direction of the council, we definitely can.
I'll let my other fellow council members weigh in.
But just keep, keep in mind on that, that that's new construction. So if you already have a backup generator that uses fuel, you'd be able to keep it.
Oh, no, I, I know, nothing is being taken away.
Right.
But I'm just thinking of somebody that builds a house, say, in Old Agoura, and they want to have a backup generator. That's the sort of scenario I was thinking of.
Okay, thank you. So I, actually, I want to ask staff, because I want to go back to the clarification on, because I do also remember that there was, that we discussed this whole backup generator thing during the subcommittee meeting and there was alternatives to a gas, and that's the reason why I think that we didn't include it.
Yes, yeah, so the, the backup to that is the, the battery backup, so that's the alternative. I'll also mention that a lot of the benefits of, of building all-electric is the avoided natural gas infrastructure that goes in under the ground. And so when you bring in a natural gas line just for those purposes, it kind of takes, it takes away those financial benefits as well. So you can, similar result can be attained using a battery.
But it doesn't give the homeowner the option of doing it, we're telling them they don't have the option, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, if you're building on a street that already has other buildings that have gas, the gas line is there. So you're just tapping into the, the gas line that's running by your house, correct?
Right, the infrastructure is regarding, infrastructure on the property.
Right.
Yes.
Right, but that would be at their expense anyway, wouldn't it? I mean, I'm just trying to give people freedom of choice in some areas because we're taking away so much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to go ahead and move over to this side of the aisle here, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. I'm very excited that this is on the agenda tonight. We have been waiting a very, very long time for this and it really is a critical, critical piece of our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So happy we're moving it forward and to Mayor Protem's point, happy that we're doing this with our, our new council, because we did talk a lot about this as we were kind of gearing up for, for this year. So, you know, I want to take a step back and again to counsel, Mayor Protem's comments that, you know, we are experiencing even this past week, very extreme, extreme weather events, whether it's, you know, heat waves or pouring rain after years of drought. We certainly know about fires and, and floods and winds that, you know, hit us. And so, you know, just to take a step back, in, in, in my opinion, the most important thing is really trying to deal with climate change. To me, that is the, the most critical piece of this. So even though we could allow certain exceptions, we could expand on some of those exceptions, I'm, I'm really trying to get back to the, to the, to the essence of why we're doing this, which is to get off fossil fuels. So I think it's, it's an important ordinance. I love that we are in good company with Santa Monica and Ojai and West Hollywood and Los Angeles and, you know, more and more the state of California and other parts of the country that are, are already moving off of fossil fuels. I, I'm particularly proud that we are a leader in this area as we are on a bunch of different things, but certainly in, in terms of acting on climate with our, our clean power lines moving to 100%, with our Climate Action Adaptation Plan and now with this ordinance, we're, we're really a leader in the Caneo Valley. So the other thing is, that I always look at is, you know, what we do is going to influence some of our neighbors and, you know, as our neighbors are, are looking at their own ordinances, they're going to look and see, what did Agoura Hills do, why, you know, what did they discuss? And so I want to make sure that this ordinance really reflects what we're trying to do because I think it will have ramifications, you know, locally, certainly globally, our little part, but, but locally as well. I did have, you know, I, I met with staff earlier last week and, and, you know, I, I really do struggle with the swimming pool and the spa issue as well. I feel like there is technology out there, but I don't know enough about it and I, I, my parents have solar heat in their pool. So I know it can be done, but I, I respect the fact that there is an industry out there that knows what's feasible kind of on a, on a larger basis. So as much as I would, you know, I was originally thinking, well, maybe we can do swimming pools and, and spas for just non-commercial, but, you know, try to keep that gas line out of the, the residential plots. But, you know, I, I understand that from an industry point of view, that, that just may not be feasible or cost, you know, cost-effective in, in reality. And so I'm, I'm willing to, you know, exempt that, knowing that in three years, we have an opportunity, I mean, we have an opportunity, whenever, to do this, but, you know, really to revisit it every few years and hopefully the, the industry will, will be more caught up at that point. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of that exception. I'm in, in favor of the other exceptions, the laboratories and the restaurants, as long as, as, as we discussed, it only applies to those pieces of a property and doesn't exempt the property at large. That was my, my bigger thing. I'm not in, in favor of adding to those exemptions in terms of barbecues or outdoor gas pits, again, because this, the, the goal is to get off of fossil fuels, to reduce our, our extreme weather events, but also since it is new construction, there is so much wonderful new battery options for electric. It just makes more sense and it's actually more stable because we have plenty of solar in, plenty of sun in California. And so to have the backups going into a battery, which are becoming more and more powerful, I think is actually a, a better solution and it's a little bit more win-win as, as far as I'm concerned. Regarding the subcommittee discussion, I'm also in favor of ripping that Band-Aid off. We don't really have any large projects that would be affected by it right now and knowing that if we make that decision tonight, it would also give future projects the indication that this is where, where we're going. You know, hopefully they would be able to make any, any modifications that, you know, would avoid anything to be too costly. So I would be in favor of not exempting, let me say this right, not exempting those in the pipeline with entitlements. And I guess my last, two last points. One is when you go through the, the packet and you, and our Climate Action Adaptation Plan, you really see that this is, this is the low-hanging fruit because it's, it's electrification, but the real, the bigger piece of our climate emissions is transportation. And as one of the commenters from our, our workshop said, why are we focusing on this when the big issue is transportation? And, I mean, this is fantastic because we're putting EV infrastructure in place. We are addressing that transportation chunk. So something like 75% and, you know, more or less of our emissions is due to transportation. And if all of our future building, you know, is EV-ready, capable, all of the different versions, we really are making a huge chunk in, in reduction of, of that transportation emission. And then my final thoughts are, you know, for the future, it's not anything in this, in this, that can be discussed in this ordinance, but, you know, I know staff is always looking for monies, for incentives, because at some point, I do hope that we can incentivize existing properties like mine. I also have gas in my house, my house was built in the 60s. You know, I would love to have the financial incentives to, to swap things out, it's happening little by little, but, you know, I know that our staff is always looking for ways that we that we can incentivize existing properties to kind of swap out as that time comes. So in favor of moving forward with the proposal as stated and with those additional comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. How about Councilmember Wolf?
Great, thank you. And a lot of my, my points have been touched on by fellow council members, but I just think that the timing of this is really interesting. As Councilmember Sylvester mentioned, talking about a federal ban on indoor gas. And I, regarding public health, I think this was really interesting. A study that came out in December 2022 from the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health found that indoor gas stove usage is associated with an increase of current asthma among children. The study found that almost 13% of childhood asthma in the United States is attributed to gas stove use. So I see this as a win-win. We are facing a change in climate. We all see and feel the effects of climate change. And while it can be painful to make these transitions, I think that it's important that we're doing it. We're leading, we're a leader here in the region. And it's going to push to incentivize solar and battery storage. With electrification, it's not, it's not a silver bullet. Some of our power is coming from coal-burning plants in Utah. But the majority of it with the CPA and with increased solar, we're moving towards a more sustainable future, and I think this is one small step. So very excited to be supporting this. I appreciate all the work that went into this report, all the questions that were answered, and I'm thrilled that this is the first big item that I get to be voting on. So thank you for this discussion.
Excellent, thank you for your comments. I will go ahead and end the comments here. I think the main thing for me is, this is really part of the Climate Action Plan and it's basically implemented in a big way. And it is with new homes. And I think that's the, again, we got to continue to reiterate that because people will think that we're mandating them to switch things out in their current homes. And I want to say that we're not, that we're basically, this is the future, and we're moving to the future. And we've been leading the way in the city of Agora with our Climate Action Plan, and this is part of that. I actually, what's funny is Councilmember Wolf, almost exact same article that he probably read and I read as well, in the 12% asthma in children. And the fact that it's children, again, is also something that really motivates me if I can get rid of the gas inside. And some of the things that was listed, nitrogen dioxide and carbon monoxide are the two biggest things that are given off from the gas stoves. So it's, even people that are opposed to this, of the electrification, they say, well, we at least need to enhance the hoods that our stoves have because there's way too much gas inside our current homes that have gas, natural gas. So I'm all in favor of going to the all-electric. On the exemption, number two, I think, knowing that we don't really have any homes, or, excuse me, multifamily projects currently in the hopper, that I'm fine actually excluding that exception. And, but I am glad we did specifically, when, I mean, the exceptions that are in there are not just based on consultants. It was based on the environmental subcommittee. When we went through it, we tried to make sure that the common sense exceptions were included in this, and that's why those exceptions are there. Especially in Agora Hills, we are now a biotech hub, and we want to continue to be a biotech hub. And so we want to make sure lab space can have that. So that was one of the big exceptions that we added in on the environmental subcommittee. And the restaurants, again, we want to make sure that our restaurants, that we have great restaurants here in Agora Hills. And again, that was another reason why we added that exemption in. And so all those things are, I'm definitely ready to move forward. And the other thing I do want to also mention is that we did have community outreach that was mentioned by staff. So again, we've also gone to the community to try to get their input as well. So with that, I will now.
Mr. Mayor, I just have, I have a couple of comments after listening to you. Because I didn't want to be over, you know, jumping into this too much, but I did want to address both, that Councilmember Klein Lopez and Councilmember Wolf. You're absolutely right. Tonight, we're talking about electrification, but I hope another night, we're talking about mandating solar and battery backup. That may be coming down the pike, we'll have to take a look. There's incentives for that in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And so we'll just have to, you know, see where this goes. This is kind of a first big step. Again, it was, it took a tremendous amount of work, so thank you, staff. And yet it is still the low-hanging fruit. It's kind of, to me, like the easiest one to go. And then again, like what Councilmember Klein Lopez was saying about transportation. And so that is the biggest part of our greenhouse gases in Agora Hills. But that's very difficult to tell people, like, you can't drive to the store. Talk about an outside barbecue, tell people they can't get in their car, or they have to go buy, trade their car in or their truck in for an electric one. So that's, it's work that's still for the council to look at in the future. And this is just kind of a first step. And so I'm excited to hear that everybody has the same view of that and what needs to be done. And I think that we're going to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I also think that we haven't had any resistance from the community because it doesn't affect anybody that lives here now.
That's, that's good, one point. Actually, one further point that I'll make actually, as well, is, on going back to your generator comments, the F-150 Lightning will, I think, power a home for six hours or something like that if it's fully charged. So I'm sure Teslas can probably do the same thing. So there's a lot of the e-vehicles besides the battery and our vehicles, and electric vehicles going forward, that'll be able to be backup generators as well going forward. So are there any further comments or questions? All right, I will now call for a motion in a second to waive full reading and introduce ordinance number 23-466 and find that the proposed action is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act in accordance with Sections 15308 and 15061B3 and exclude exception two. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved. I'm going to do it. Councilmember Buckley Weber, because I said my name, moves for approval. Thank you.
I'll second, this is Deborah Klein Lopez.
All right, I will now defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead, you have approval, five to zero.
Honorable Mayor, if I may, for the record. So that exception number two is exception number two under the staff report, but I'll clarify what exception we're actually taking out, which is exception number four under subsection, subsection 4.106.5 of the Cal Green Code, which is a part of Section 8215.2 of the Gurr Hills Municipal Code. So that will be removed as part of your motion. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. All right, our next item is a discussion regarding residential solid waste services for 2023. I will now defer to Deputy City Manager Louis Lea for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Anstead, and members of the council. Good evening. This evening, staff will present the residential solid waste escalation for 2023 along with the request from Waste Management with respect to the solid waste rate adjustment and a request from Waste Management for the city council to consider an extension of the current residential franchise agreement. Next. Provide some direction this evening. Here is what staff will be covering during this presentation. We will briefly review our franchise agreement, briefly cover escalation. We will review the escalation for curbside and residential bin services. We will review the solid waste rate adjustment request. We will discuss the request for the fee increase for the valet service and an organics contamination fee. We will also review the Waste Management request for consideration of a franchise agreement extension option. There will obviously be recommendations and, of course, questions at the end. Next. And now we'll talk about our residential franchise agreement and escalation. Next. As a recap, in 2016, the city council approved a new residential franchise agreement with Waste Management. The current agreement term is January 1 of 2017 through June 30 of 2023. Within our franchise agreement, there is a provision for an annual rate increase allowed each year based on CPI, commonly referred to as escalation. The agreement also contains rate protection language for the city. Next. I wanted to share with you the section of the agreement that affords the city the rate protection language. This provides a city with the most competitive rate as the first city to issue Waste Management a residential franchise agreement among the four cities listed. The language in essence states that our rates shall be reduced to an amount no greater than a neighboring city's jurisdiction that also carries a residential franchise agreement. I will demonstrate how this works later in the presentation. Next. So we'll talk about the escalation increase and how it works. As mentioned earlier, escalation reflects the changes in the Consumer Price Index. For the 2021 and 22 period, CPI is 7.42%. Under our agreement, there is a 3% cap for CPI. Thus, the CPA adjustment for 2023 for the escalation will be 3%. The city solid waste consultant, SWS, and staff have confirmed the CPI rates. Per the agreement, Waste Management is required to notify all customers 15 days prior to the effective rate increases. The 2023 rates will be effective January 1, 2023, and the billing will reflect that adjustment. So that letter will go out to the residents 15 days prior to the increases going. But to let the council know, there will probably be a retroactive billing. So when that, they get their first bill, there'll be an adjustment, and Waste Management will have to identify that in the letter. So now let's talk about the escalation review. To review the escalation for 2023 for curbside service, the standard level, which is a 64-gallon trash, a 64-gallon recycle can, and a 96-gallon green waste cart, they will see an 88% increase, excuse me, an 88 cents increase. However, due to the rate protection language that you saw before you within the franchise agreement, this rate will be adjusted to the neighboring city's comparable rate. So for this category, there will be a 1% increase. Other cart services will see increases ranging from 61 cents to $1.87, depending on the service category they have. Our multifamily complexes, condos, et cetera, will see increases ranging from 48 cents to 92 cents, again, depending on the service level used. Next. So the slide here shows an example of the Level 1 service whereby the rate protection language affects the rate. As you can see, the current rate of $29.43 plus a CPI adjustment of 88 cents would place the rate higher than the neighboring city's rate that has a residential franchise agreement with Waste Management. So due to the rate protection language, the rate will be adjusted to reflect the city's most comparable city rate, which is $29.35, which is the Westlake Village rate. Next. For residential bin service, the standard service level, which is a three-cubic yard trash bin serviced once a week, there will be an increase of $2.83. This category, like the standard residential cart service, will also see an adjustment due to the rate protection language. The service, this is the service that is most common for this service per representatives from Waste Management. Other residential service levels will see increases ranging from $5.31 to $14.77. It should be noted that many of the services are for the three-cubic yard trash bins that are serviced, say, two ice a week, three times a week, potentially four times a week. And also for the larger bin, such as a four-cubic yard bin, which in essence equates to more trash disposal. But as indicated before, there are no service levels, at least customers at that service level, but it is a service category that is available to customers in Agora Hills should they desire that. Next. As in the prior example, this shows how the rate protection language affects the standard residential bin service. With the CPI adjustment added to the 2022 rate, the total would exceed the neighboring city's rate. So as you see, currently, the rate is $97.33. When you add the CPI adjustment of $2.92, the proposed 2023 rate would be $100.25. But as you see from the, on the last column, the Calabasas rate is $116 for the same service. So thereby, it will be adjusted to the rate that is the neighboring city's. And that is because of our residential rate protection language. Now we'll review the solid waste rate adjustment request. Per the agreement, a solid waste rate adjustment is permitted and allows a company to request increases beyond CPI as it relates to operation cost. This is a request that is not, and is not automatic as a CPI adjustment is. The council has the ability to not approve the request if that is a desire. As reflected in the presentation, this is the third consecutive year that a SWRA is being made. Next. For 2023, Waste Management is requesting an SWRA in response to landfill tipping rate increases at the Simi Valley and Res, Simi Valley Landfill and Recycling Center as identified in the County of Ventura notices to Waste Management in your staff report. For 2023, there was a 5% increase in the gate rates at the landfill from the 2022 rate, which is about $4.01 per ton cost. While the rates are set by Ventura County, the site is owned and operated by Waste Management, but the rates are again set by the County of Ventura. If the solid waste rate adjustment is approved, this would be an additional cost on top of the CPI adjustment, which is automatic. And as you see on the slide, for curbside service, this equates to an additional 51 cents to 98 cents, depending on the service level that is used. For multifamily complexes, this would equate to a 9 cent to a 28 cent increase. And I want to note, that is a correction from the staff report as while staffers reviewing this, again, we noticed we had pulled a wrong column. So we wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. And also, it would be fair to Waste Management. Finally, for the residential bin service, this equates to an additional $2.29 to $13.72 increase, depending on the service level used. In the next slide, I will show how this, how this affects the change. So the slide here shows how the solid waste rate impacts the current rate. As you can see, the current rates for mini-can, Level 1, and the residential bin service would increase by an additional cost shown in the solid waste rate adjustment column. As the SWRA additions would again place the rates higher than the neighboring city's rate, who also have franchise agreements for similar services, the rate will be adjusted to reflect the most common neighboring rate. So I take, for example, curbside Level 1. If you add the current rate plus what's allowed per CPI and then add the solid waste rate adjustment, you would see that the rate is $30.83. So it will be adjusted to the Westlake Village rate, which you saw earlier, which was 29.35. Then the other two that you see asterisks, will, they'll be adjusted to the current rate as comparable in the neighboring city. For the multifamily bin, which is the 64-gallon blue and the 64-gallon gray, they'll see an additional 19 cents added to CPI increase of 70 cents, bringing the final rate to $24.14. It should be noted that this does not include the valet service fee that is also added to some multifamily customers. And we'll cover that in a bit. So now we're going to cover, next, the valet service request increase being made by Waste Management. In some of the multifamily complexes, there is a residential cart valet service fee to cover the costs for Waste Management operations staff who have to come and pull out a residential cart and recycling cart in order for the, for the complex to be serviced. I will, in particular, reference the Annandale II complex. Because of the nature of the complex and how it was built back in, I guess, the 1960s or 70s, the spaces there are very small. So it's not, it's not viable for the cans to go out on the street because obviously there are space restrictions. I think residents there, I think, get one parking space. So many of them park on Canejo View. So that's why residential carts in those complexes can't be put on the street. So in essence, this valet fee was set up many, many years ago. So the current fee right now is $15.76, and Waste Management is requesting a consideration of a $20 per month fee. As you can see, this is about a 27% increase, and it appears to be in the higher end. I do have a chart there, and you did see it in your staff report, but if you need to see the rates, I will show it on the next slide. The proposed increase for this service level, valet service level request would impact about 348 customers. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to show you, those are some of the comparable rates that you see. We did make a change to Ventura County as we were given some in. We did make a change to Ventura County as we were given some information by Waste Management, and then our solid waste consultant went out and did some research as well and kind of confirmed and made some changes. So as you can see, as it says, the $20 cost is kind of a little bit on the high end, but as you can see, there are comparable rates and services. Next, please. So the options available to the council with request to the valet service request for residential cart service would be to approve the fee, which is $20, or you could reject the request and only permit the change per CPI. Like the residential cart service valet, there is also a residential bin valet service. These are the large three-cubic yard trash bins that are present in some multifamily complexes and in many of the residential equestrian community sector, which is Oldagura. This service requires a smaller vehicle to come and remove the larger bin from the property and place it on the street so it can be picked up by the main vehicle. The current fee is $27.63, and Waste Management is requesting consideration of a fee increase to $46.59, which is about a 72% increase. The solid waste consultant, again, did a survey of the neighboring cities for similar services. And it should be noted that different jurisdictions have different labels. So sometimes it's very difficult to determine what is a bin service, but we kind of made a good review and a good analysis of this. So it appears that the increase is around the middle range. And this would impact approximately 51 customers. And again, if you can show the next slide, please. This is just a table. Next slide, please. This is just a table in the larger format that you see. As you can see, the proposed rate is comparable to the city of Calabasas, but you also see in Ventura County, a drive-in charge. Again, we kind of deem that to be very similar to a valet, is around $61. Go down to Fillmore, a pullout bin, very similar, was around $61.62. So again, this is around the middle range of this request. Next, please. The options available to the city council regarding this particular request are, once again, to approve the fee at $46.59, $46.59, or reject the request and only permit the change per CPI. Now, next, we'll review the request for an organics contamination fee. Waste Management is requesting consideration of a change of the current recycling contamination fee. They would like to change this to make it reflect on organics contamination fee in response to SB 1383. The current fee is $28.83, and that's for a regular residential cart contamination. And that's for contamination of not just organics. It could be the contamination of your trash bin if you put the wrong thing in your trash bin or you put trash in your recycle bin. And Waste Management has a process by which, if they see that, they don't automatically assess a fee. They'll tag the cart, they'll give the resident several times. I think it's as many as three times before they actually assess a fee. Let's see, where did we leave off? Okay. As referenced in the staff report, other service collectors utilize a contamination fee, but they don't really assess the fee associated with 1383. At this time, staff believes that the current increase or the current rate is sufficient. Finally, this evening, I would like to present to the council Waste Management's request for consideration to exercise the franchise agreement extension option. Within the agreement, there's a provision that provides for the extension of the current residential franchise agreement for an additional four years, thereby concluding the current residential franchise agreement on June 30th of 2027. As I indicated before, the current agreement is scheduled to conclude on June 30th of 2023. As part of the extension request, Waste Management is proposing to modify the current residential household hazardous waste collection service to a monthly service. Currently, this service is provided three times a year, and this is a service where residents can call and schedule to have their household hazardous waste items or their electronic items picked up from their homes on a designated day as assigned by Waste Management. Next. The program would continue to operate as an appointment-based program, and Waste Management will limit the monthly appointments to 100 pickups. Appointments made after the maximum limit will roll over into the next month. Staff recalls that, at least with the current program, I do not recall that the appointments have ever exceeded 100 appointments, but Waste Management could probably confirm that. The program will continue to be provided at no cost, additional cost to the city or to the residential customers. The question before the council this evening is, why consider an extension? Historically, through the term of both franchise agreements, Waste Management has proven to be a reliable provider. They have continued to assist the city with solid waste mandates passed on by the state, and as the council is aware, we are compliant with our mandates. They have been instrumental in assisting the city with SB 1383 compliance and have demonstrated their support to the community and at major city events. An agreement extension would afford rate protection language to continue and afford the city council the ability to control the rates beyond CPI. Consideration of releasing a request for proposal for residential solid waste collection services could potentially result in higher rates, and there's a very strong possibility that the rate protection language will not be part of a future contract. Additionally, Waste Management is currently undertaking projects that will extend the useful life of the landfill, and this equates to continued fair rates. I say this because a landfill has a designated life cycle, and if that landfill closes and another one has to open, there is no guarantee that that landfill will be local. It could potentially be hundreds of miles away, as I referenced the Pointe Hills landfill, which eventually closed when I was working in another city about 10, 12 years ago. They were talking about putting that waste on rail and sending it to the desert. And at that time, the gate fees that they were being told for disposing of it at the landfill were, say, $50. And if it ended up going to this desert, they were saying to put it on a rail and ship it somewhere else, that that potential fee could go up to $100 a ton. That, in essence, equates back down to the customer because then the collector has to recover that cost for shipping it somewhere. So by doing things at the landfill to extend the useful life, basically, the provider is guaranteeing that they can continue to provide fair rates. Also, they're also working on current environmental projects as some of our council have had the pleasure of going to the landfill and seeing some of the projects they're doing to limit their impact on the environment. Particularly, they're doing a project where they're going to capture, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're capturing the methane gas from the landfill, which is usually burned off, and they're going to basically use it to kind of put it back into the system and potentially transfer it into energy. So as they indicated to staff, as well as to the council members on the tour, they want to be an environmental steward for the region. They feel it's important for them to be an environmental steward. Next slide, please. So this evening, staff is respectfully recommending that the council receive and file the report for solid waste escalation increase of 3% for residential solid waste services for 2023. And we're seeking to provide direction for staff with the request with respect to the additional solid waste rate adjustment that is being submitted by Waste Management, the valet service fee requested is also being requested by Waste Management, and the organics contamination fee also being requested. And then we'd like the council to consider approval of the Waste Management franchise agreement extension request option to June 30th of 2027. This concludes my report. And I, along with our solid waste consultant, and we have representatives from Waste Management in the audience, are available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you for that great presentation. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have questions? Of staff? Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Louis, does Waste Management still have a pickup of bulky items once or twice a year at no cost of the residents?
Yes, that bulky item option is still available. It's available every year. And in essence, you can have four bulky items picked up at your residence, either four at one time or twice, two times a year. That is part of the franchise agreement. It is current.
Thank you. And then also, I was curious, you know, this whole valet service, and you talked about Annandale being an example. That doesn't seem sustainable to me. Has anyone ever looked at some different options? For example, that there would be no parking on the street on trash day?
We never have. I mean, that would be something we would have to poll the community. I mean, if that's the council's desire for something for staff to look at, that is something we could do. We've never ever polled to see what we would do. That would be the option. You would have to basically close the street on that particular given day, and then the residents could roll their carts out there. But we have not done that. But if that is a desire of the council for us to look at, we could look into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from of staff?
Yes. I really enjoyed our tour, Louis. Thank you for taking me out there. I do have a question about the senior discount, which I only discovered because I saw it when I was reading this report. There's a 15% senior discount if you're 62 or over. And since we have an aging population, and many of them are on fixed incomes, I really would like to make sure that that information gets out because I looked at my bill, which I have just, you know, a paperless now. So all you get is what you owe, and you don't get any other information at all unless you dig really deep. And then I couldn't find anywhere on the website that would, about, I Googled senior discount on the website search, rather, and there was nothing there. So then I finally called yesterday, and I spoke to a very nice representative, and I now have my senior discount. But I'd like to make sure that they let our senior residents know because when they see this increase, and if they don't already have that 15%, it'll help them offset that.
Yes, I'm sure the Waste Management staff will work on that, and staff will as well. We can put some social media posts out about, you know, once the new rates come in, remember if you're a senior, you know, request your senior discount. And when I talk to residents who call and kind of, they, oh, I'm a senior, I always ask, do you have your senior discount? And they say, oh, I do. Some do, some don't. Oh, great. And then they call, and the Waste Management staff immediately, you know, I get a call from them saying, oh, yeah, we spoke to Mr. Jones, and they have their senior discount.
And also, to follow up on what Councilmember Buckley Weber said, I don't think no parking on Annandale trash days is a great idea just simply because they already have a parking issue out there because of the high school. And so where would they go on trash day?
And that may have been the impetus for the reason why they have a valet service. I wasn't here when that happened, but I was aware of the service when I first came.
Yes, I wouldn't advance that idea myself personally. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. Some technical stuff tonight. This is a lot more technical than I think the public gives us some credit for here. So I have a few questions just to clarify. So for the residential cart valet service, that's the $20 fee, which is a 27% increase, and that's Annandale.
That would be, yes, I think it would be primarily Annandale. And I'm not sure if we have any other multifamilies that have that. I think it's particularly just that.
Okay, well, the number adds up because I think Annandale has 350-something units, so that makes sense. But for the valet service for the residential bins, that's the 72% increase. So where is that? What developments are there?
That is primarily going to be, I believe, in our, I believe, I do know, in our Oldagura area because there are many services there that have larger bins as well as carts. But I do believe that down in the Liberty Canyon, there is a couple of condo complexes that have bin service as well. And I know that gets pulled out on the Liberty Canyon and gets collected. And there may be maybe one or two smaller apartment complexes that may have the same.
So their whole bill would go up by 72%?
It would go up currently by CPI, which is, what would be the?
Seven.
It would go up around, I think, the current, the current rate is 15. It would go up to 16 with some CPI. But then if you approve that adjustment, it's going to go up to that $46.59 fee. And that would be on top of the trash service that they're paying for. So if you're in, let's take, for example, if you're in Annandale 2. I'm sorry, if you're in Oldagura and you are a residential homeowner who has a three-cubic yard bin and it's serviced once a week, you're going to pay the three-cubic yard bin monthly service, and then you're going to pay for that valet, which you're paying for now. It's kind of like a scout service. They go out, they pull it. Right now, it's $15, $16. But if you approve that request, it's going to jump up to $46.59 on top of their trash bill.
Okay, that's very significant. Okay. And I guess my other question. I think, I think I got it. Everything else I've written down is more. Thoughts for deliberation. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, so we'll move into public comments. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the raised hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. We respectfully request that if you have something to distribute to the council, you hand it to the city clerk and do not approach the dais. I'll now defer to the city clerk for public comments.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public comments. However, we do have two-speaker cards from Waste Management representatives, Justin Honsinger and Sandra Persley. I'm not sure if either would like to speak.
Good evening.
Justin Honsinger. Go ahead and adjust the, there you go.
Is that better? Honorable mayor, council, and staff, my name is Justin Honsinger, and I am the area manager for WM. For over 25 years, WM has taken pride in servicing the community of Agoura Hills. Our first priority is always to provide safe, reliable services your residents and businesses can count on. Beyond that, our focus is to maximize resource value while minimizing our environmental impact so both the economy and the environment can thrive. We have paved the way for a more sustainable tomorrow in so many ways. I'd like to mention just a few examples here tonight. First company that made the transformation to CNG here in Agoura Hills and across the nation. We are already test piloting electric vehicles here in Southern California. We recently had a groundbreaking event at our new renewable natural gas facility, which will be among the biggest in the state. A few of you have made it out to see our facility. Our doors are always open to you folks. We welcome the opportunity to show off the great things we're doing to protect our environment. We appreciate your consideration for the item in front of you tonight. My team and I are here should you have any questions. Thank you for your time. Look forward to seeing you at the site.
And our next speaker will be Sandra Persley.
I think you can hear me. Do I need to adjust it? Good evening. I'm Sandra Persley here on behalf of WM. You guys had a rough night between the electrification and the number of outlets and the, I was taking notes, and the natural gas. I did, there was a lot of information. We work really closely with staff. We meet monthly and talk on a regular basis, and we work together a lot in preparation for this decision before you tonight. So much information. Louis and the city's consultant did a great job putting things together. So much to cover, and sometimes with that, there can be a little bit of confusion. And so I felt compelled to come up and just clarify three things that I think are really important to point out. So first, on the contamination fee, I think there was some confusion. There is already a contamination fee in the agreement. There is a recycling contamination fee and an organics contamination fee. And that's important because that's how we help educate and encourage. We actually never imposed a contamination fee in Agoura Hills for residential customers. But with the change in law, with SB 1383, it's important that should folks not catch on with the enhanced education on what goes in each cart, that we have the ability to help encourage them to use their carts properly. So there's already a recycling contamination fee, a green waste contamination fee. We propose changing the name of green waste to organics to align with now what we're calling the organics container, since there's food in there. We did not propose changing the amount beyond the CPI. What we did propose was a bin contamination fee that would apply in the multifamily sector, and that's the $75 after three warnings. Multifamily is exceptionally hard, as I'm sure you guys know in other areas, to provide education, incentivize behavior change. So right now, the agreement does not allow for a contamination fee in those bins, and that's why we proposed it. So it's really to help the city comply with SB 1383, not a deal breaker. That's a great service available in the city right now. Currently, you have quarterly events, up to 72 appointments per quarter. Got a little bit lost in translation. There have been some times where customers want to sign up, and they don't want to wait until the next quarter. So, as an added convenience, we proposed, hey, let's do it monthly. Let's offer a route each month. So, then you have pickups per month, just under 20 pickups per month versus having to wait for the quarter. We thought that that would be a better experience for your residents. So, it's a bit overstated. In the staff report, it looks like there's 100 pickups per month, which that is not, that would be a 200, or over $100,000 enhancement. That's, I'm not prepared to offer that tonight. And then, I can answer a lot of questions about the valet. Looking at the rate comparison, gosh, it's so confusing, because they call valet different things. Valet is a separate truck. So, we send a separate truck to go move the containers, so that a different truck can service them. That other truck has to come back and put it back. It said that they were at the middle-to-high range, and looking at the comparison, we're really at the bottom. So, Calabasas, we heard them a lot tonight. We proposed $20, and their residential valet fee is actually $21 and some change. And then, you may have noticed in the table, you'd see like $11, $10, and that looks pretty shocking compared to what we had proposed. Those are applied per bin, per month. So, standard container is typically one three-yard container, one time a week. So, you would take the $11 and change, times four, and that would be your amount, which actually is a little bit higher than what we've proposed. So, just wanted to clarify that. Again, the team and I are here for questions. Thank you again to the team for putting all of this together. I do not envy your position, having to sit and listen to this. I went way over, I apologize, but I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Oh, sure.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
I thought that you were agreeing to 100 per month, and I thought that was awesome.
Me, too.
Thank you. So, here's my question about the organics. I want to go back to the, so, there's a current fee. That's a recycling contamination fee, right?
There is a recycling contamination fee on the rate sheet. There is also a green waste contamination fee on the rate sheet. We are proposing?
Right, before you go there, how much are each of those?
I'm going to look at?
I think the total is 2883.
I think you're right. I've got it right here in the staff report. They, man, I hate finding things on the spot. 2969, I believe, is the current. Oh, that's with the adjustment. So, the existing, I probably, of all these papers I brought up here, did not bring that up.
Currently proposed, just with CPI only, for 2023, the recycling contamination fee would be $29.58, and the green waste contamination fee is the same.
Is the same?
Yes.
So, that's what we're, that's, that's what it would go up to. But, what are we paying right now for these two different kinds of?
Twenty nine, we're paying 29.58 right now.
Okay. So, you want to switch that and have it be, you want to get rid of those and call it organic? I mean, you just want to switch it? You want to call it?
Just want to change the name. So, instead of?
Change the name to organic contamination?
Yes.
So, what happens when somebody has recycled contamination?
Well, I'm glad you asked, because it gives me an opportunity to show off a little bit more, since you're, we have smart truck technologies, so we have over 11 military-grade cameras on our vehicles. Most of them are designed for, with safety in mind, but there are hopper cameras, cameras that we invested in, in preparation for SB 1383. They record material as it dumps into the vehicle with actual inspectors watching the videos, and then there's an algorithm that we taught to watch for contaminants. It looks for a certain threshold. Typically, for organics, it's more than 10% of the material. For recyclables, it's more than 25. And then, if it's observed, we would send a notification based on the customer preference, whether email or written, to the customer indicating that there was contamination. What's great is in the email option, you can click the video, and you can watch the material dump. I have to say, even as an expert watching the videos, at first, I was like, that's contamination? So, it, there is a learning curve, too. We've, we've been doing it for a few years now, about six years on the commercial side of things, and coming up on three years on the residential side. We keep getting better and better. I do want to clarify that it's, it's not a revenue generator. That's not the intent. We're not looking to, I saw the justification in the staff report, and it said that other fees cover it. That's not what this is. This is to help the city comply with SB 1383. Beginning in 2024, you have to, right now, the law, as of last, a new year, but as of January 1st, you had to watch for contamination in your containers, and then proactively communicate with residents and businesses when contamination is identified. Beginning in 2024, it will be the city's obligation to provide penalties for those folks that don't comply. That could include electronics in the trash. That could include recyclables in the trash, or recyclables or, or plastic, or we see a lot of garden hoses and cinder blocks. When folks hide it at the bottom of the cart, we see you now because of our cameras, but that's really what it's designed to do. And the law is that the city observe a percentage of each route, and then communicate to customers where they need help being better recyclers.
Okay, thank you for that. And, one last thing. So, this, this contamination fee, that for multifamily?
For the bin, the proposed new contamination fee of $75, which is consistent with the industry standard, is for the bin, so the metal bin multifamily customers. Again, they would have to, to contaminate more than three times to, to trigger that type of event. I personally don't want to charge them. It generates a lot of calls. Just so you know, every time somebody calls me at, at the call center, it costs us more than $8. So, we are not trying to bother people so that they call us or call Louis at the city. It's really, in cases where the proactive education doesn't work, we've tried everything, and they refuse to change behavior, that's when that fee comes into place. And, full transparency, if the customer were irate, and they called Louis or any of you and said, "This fee is ridiculous, I can't do this," we would more than likely credit it, because it's really not the spirit of what we're trying to do. We're trying to change behavior as a last resort.
Thank you so much.
Can I follow up on that question about the $75 multifamily fee? I mean, you must get, i- if that's the case, you know, you can change your own behavior, but you can't always change your neighbor's behavior. So, I would be penalized in a multifamily unit. If I lived next door to Candace, I would be penalized if she dumped the wrong thing into, Candace never would.
Candace.
But, like, what happens if, you know, you've got one neighbor who just refuses? Because I, I absolutely, I've already heard people say, you know, you can't, you know, it's an invasion of my privy, you're, you're looking at my trash, that's an invasion of my privacy, I can do what I want, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm not sure, how fair is that to penalize a, a multifamily unit for the behavior of one or very few people?
I agree with you. And Candace, if you could please recycle better, we'd all appreciate it.
I only did that, because if I said Jeremy, that would be bigger problems.
So, there's a, there's a couple of different ways to answer that, and I'm really going to try to be succinct. I get too excited, and there's a lot you can cover with trash. So, there's multifamily in a bin customer, where the bill goes to a property manager or to, it's, it goes to, you know, whomever manages the, the facility for the bins. We work with all types of complexes. We have sustainability coaches here locally, that the spirit of those, the city, from a commercial perspective, we're 100% compliant. You are 100% compliant. We are together in terms of organics and recycling, that's separate from this agreement. And that's really due to the city's consultant and Louis and our sustainability coaches out there, working with the businesses. So, from a bin perspective, if I own a multifamily complex and I pay the bill, it may impact the rent that I charge if, at some point, they can't get on board. We are available to help deliver flyers. I love to set up, well, not me anymore, but set up tables and hand out donuts as people come in and out of work and share education materials. But, it is a challenge. For cart customers, a multifamily cart situation, where there's individually billed, but you live in a multifamily complex, your contamination fee would be on your individual bill. For a master build complex with lots of carts, I have to tell you, it's really hard to apply, and the chances of us doing it are probably slim. What, I'm not going to say we wouldn't, because again, we're getting better and better, but what that would probably look like is taking the examples and the footage and sitting down with the HOA board or property manager, looking at the repeat offenders or the repeat items. Shrink wrap is usually our number-one contaminant. So, we can, or bagged recyclables. So, we can target education, and we've been buying social media ads, according to, like, GeoCodeed, trying to get to the right audience. But, we can now target public education. Instead of a general message about do this, it's like, gosh, we're really having a hard time with cinder blocks and the green waste. We can send out messages specific to that, and have been really working closely with staff to do that. So, I don't, I probably didn't answer your question.
Well, I guess my question is, in which of those scenarios is the $75?
Only the bin customer that goes to the property manager.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does any other council member have any questions?
Yes, I, I do. Thank you. I'm really glad you're coming every month for the household hazardous waste, which is great to have that option. I just want to clarify for the food waste.
Okay.
Going in the green bin, because it's been a little confusing, and I've had arguments with my neighbors. But, now, at this point, because originally, it was just dump your food in, on top of your green waste.
Sure.
So, now, is it, don't dump your food, put it in a separate plastic bag, and then put it in the green waste bin, or?
Yes.
So, no, no just dumping anymore, just?
We would prefer that it be put into a bag, and really, the, we, we are at fault for the mixed messages. I have to tell you, everywhere in Southern California, we do not want the bag, and it's really facility-dependent. So, whomever is processing that material, based on their permits, based on their processing technology, has a preference to whether they want it in a bag, or paper bag, or compostable bag, or plastic bag. In this case, our partner that we work with for organics processing prefers the bag. So, we ask that you put your food waste scraps into the bag.
Into a bag, and then in the green bin.
Sure.
Thank you.
We won't take a picture if it's loose, though. I just want you to know.
One more question for staff. So, the, the franchise agreement extension is being requested, and that is independent of any decision we make tonight about price increases?
Yes, that is an independent decision.
So, no matter what we decide, there's, you still want to?
Yeah, we're asking the council to consider the extension request.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question back to you. I think the, the main question I have for you is, because I haven't heard it tonight, even, I mean, from staff either, really, is the explanation of, like, are, we're considering whether to raise some of these fees, the valet fee and the recycling contamination and others, above the CPI? So, why, if, tell me why the CPI would not be sufficient to, if we raise the fee just to the CPI?
Okay. First, I'd, I'd like to address just the concept of the CPI, and really, what Louis referenced early in the presentation was the MFN, which is an acronym for Most Favored Nation. And that's basically, you compare it to other cities, and your rates can't be higher, which is the great thing, but it's really arbitrary. Every city has a different, it's like a recipe. You know, they have different ingredients of what they want, and it's really, it's great for you to compare rates between jurisdictions. But, just some perspective, CPI, I'm sure none of you are strangers to hyperinflation. So, in December, January, February, CPI was as high as 9%. For our year, our year-over-year change in CPI, so our costs, as, our change in costs as defined by our agreement, was 7.42%. That equates to $2.17 for the average size. So, most of your residents have a certain size. They're getting one penny change in rate, so 12 cents. From the 3% CPI, which that is not our change in cost, that's an arbitrary cap in the agreement, that's $1.76 per home. And again, your most standard size is getting a change of one penny per month. And so, the, the, and then the trash that they spoke to, the $4 a ton, that's 19 cents per home, per month. And then, the change in organics, which again, we cannot control, was 42 cents per home. So, our all-in change in cost, when you factor CPI in those processing changes, is over $200,000. The change that we are getting, I think it's $640. So, our costs are not at all recovered in, in the adjustment that's before you on most of the rates. And it, you know, it's a, we sit down with the city, and they say, "Well, we like Calabasas rate, and we like the Westlake rate, and gosh, that's uncomfortable, but that's what the contract says." So, in terms of CPI, our costs are not being covered. The spirit of the valet request, I feel strongly that there, that customers that do not require special services should not have to pay for those that do. So, the, because of the MFN and because of other provisions in the agreement, the cost of that valet service that requires an enormous amount of time, so somebody mentioned Annandale, they have over 600 carts, so we have to manually roll out and roll back, and the time of service. And so, that extra cost to stay there and do that, and the same thing where I mentioned we sent an extra truck, has not kept pace with the cost of offering that service. So, what we did is we looked, we thought, gosh, here's where the act, here's a customer base that's getting an enormous amount of service, and they're severely undercharged for it, and it felt like the most fair approach, rather than approach you to raise rates for everybody, to take, go to specifically to the customers that require this special service, and ask that you adjust their cost of service. And?
Well, go ahead.
No, that's it. I'm going to, I'm going to stop myself.
Okay, no problem. Sounds good. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I think we'll, we'll move forward here.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to deliberations.
Mayor Anstead? We just need to check on the remote, if there was anybody that submitted via Zoom. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Thank you. Now, I want to make sure, any council member have any further questions or comments? All right, now, we'll move on to deliberations, and I think we'll start on the, my left this time. How about, we'll start with Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you for being here and for helping to clarify. Thank you for the, the staff report. You know, I'm, I'm hesitant to, I, I think that the, I, I understand the increase in the, the gate fees, and I think that the residential cart service that most of us have is, is a pretty minimal increase that seems to be in line with, with our contract. Very concerned about the, the valet services, because it seems like such a jump all at once. And I, I don't remember this from the last time we, we discussed, you know, changes to the, to the pricing. So, I feel, I'm not exactly sure why this is coming up so significantly this year, and I'm not, I'm not really understanding, you know, frankly, to, to put it kind of bluntly, what incentive we have as a council to ask our residents to absorb that jump, when you still want to work with us and extend some contractual agreements. If, if it were something that is negotiable, that we could talk about, you know, between you and staff, and it could be a more gradual correction, I think I would be more amenable to, to looking at that. But, just the sudden increase, I think, is a very tough pill to swallow, not only for our condo and apartment residents, but also our equestrian areas. I mean, you know, it is not inexpensive to take care of those kinds of animals, and so, you know, a jump like this that would affect Old Agora, I think, is, it's very, very significant. So, I'm very reluctant to, to ask our residents to absorb that. In terms of the recycling contamination? In terms of the recycling contamination fee, again, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to put a burden on our residents when I do feel like the messages coming from waste, from WM and, and have not been consistent. And, you know, especially, and SP, trust me, I work for the state, so I get it. I get how sometimes, you know, things get pushed out there and we're scrambling to make it work. So I understand the challenges with SB 1383, but especially when it was first rolled out. And I am proud of all of us collectively that we were one of the first cities to really jump in. But the, the messaging to the residents was, was not consistent. It was very confusing. And, you know, even me, I'm on the council, I'm on Clean Power Alliance, I'm on all of these different organizations that are so involved in, in recycling and reducing our, our impact on this world. You know, even I didn't know that we were supposed to put the organics in a bag until my fellow council member told me. And so I feel like putting this burden on the residents so soon, and I, and I understand that it's a, it's not meant to penalize, it's meant to educate. But I feel like the, the burden right now is more on us, you and us collectively, than the residents. So again, I'm hesitant to put, to put in, you know, a $75 fee and things like that, that, when I, I'm not sure that the, we're giving a fair, a fair chance. I'm happy to hear that the household waste and the e-waste is increasing to monthly. We've had a lot of problems with that too. We've had people call and get the wrong information. I believe that one of your operators, we were giving our constituents information for Aurora, Colorado, and not Agora Hills, California. And, you know, our residents call and they're, they're booked up. So, you know, I think that's just another area that I would hope that we could work together to, to educate our residents so that they're not missing that boat and being on this long waitlist. I would want some confidence that these appointments don't roll over and then you end up having a quarterly wait or something like that, if the, if the spots fill up too fast. The, I, I think I'm gonna leave it at that for now. I wanna, I want to hear what some of my other colleagues have to say about all that before we, I do a final review of the, of the different asks that staff is asking of us. So those are my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And you, you made a comment about us having a difficult job, but you guys have a difficult job. Truly with the implementation of SB 1383, with inflation, with the price of fuel, with our, the confusion on recycling for the general public, the wish cycling that, that goes on. You guys keep society moving. Without you, we would be, it'd be a public health crisis. So, so appreciate the work you do. I do echo Councilmember Klein Lopez's comments about, it, it, it feels kind of sudden. I, I live in Anandale and we, I, half of the residents weren't even aware of the valet fee until this year. And I know that that was kind of, the rollout was confusing. And so now we're signed up on the valet fee, but then to, you know, go beyond the CPI is not something I'm quite comfortable yet for, you know, for folks who are on fixed incomes or retired folks. These, you know, it's a vulnerable section and younger section, older section of, of our population in Agora Hills. So it does feel kind of sudden. And I, and I do appreciate the organic, and your, your willingness to work with residents on the organic waste. You know, with anything, change is difficult and we do need to change behaviors because it's incumbent on, on leaders, it's incumbent to, to educate folks. Because it's confusing and it's different and it, it is a big change. And so, while I do understand why it would be prudent to have a fee, I'm, I, I do want to hear what my fellow, I was gonna say, my fellow city council members have to say about that. But I, yeah, so I would like to hear from fellow council members. But echoing some of Councilmember Klein Lopez's comments. But also just thank you for the work you do and your willingness to work with the city and residents.
Councilmember Wolf, would you be in favor of extending their agreement through 2027?
For, for the agreement, do you mean the 3% increase or do you mean the?
No, the contract.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And I do as well.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, yes, we'll go to Councilmember Sylvester.
I second what my fellow council members have already said. I, I think waste management has done a wonderful job with our city. I thoroughly enjoyed my tour, even seeing the water buffalo. It was fun. They had escaped. So, and I love that you are creating that wildlife corridor. I think that's great. And the fact that you're looking at ways to extend the life of the landfill. So all those things are wonderful and I thank you for doing that and, you know, leading the way in that area. But there is that, I agree in extending the contract, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a problem with the, the large increase for these certain areas as opposed to the rest of the city. I just, you know, it's going to be hard for some people to suddenly go with no planning for that large an increase. And if we could maybe find a middle ground there, I think that would help us a lot making our decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Buckley-Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let me start with curbside service. I have no problem with raising it, the CPI or the additional money that you want. The valet service, that is completely unsustainable. That to me, to have two trucks going out is, when I read that, I just couldn't even believe that that's what was going on, frankly. And I see that we are going to be faced with raising that fee every single year with significant jumps. And so as much as I love the students at Agora High, Anandale should seriously consider about taking their own trash bins out, putting them on the curb on trash day and having no parking on the trash day. I mean, I'm just saying, to me, we need to work together and come up with solutions for this valet. Because this is not going to work. The rest of the city should not be picking up the cost for that. We've got to really work and focus in on that. There's got to be some, some solutions. I just can't even imagine that two, that a, that two trucks, one, one of them makes two trips. I mean, that, you know, and one makes one trip. I mean, that's three truck trips to pick up the trash every week. That, that to me, with, in fairness to places like the multifamily, they don't have recycle bins, the bins. And so if you live in one of those, you take your bag of recycles and you throw it into the big giant bin. And that's mixed in with food scraps and it's, so I don't, how do we punish them if they don't even have the right bins? And what can we do about that? We just, it, it's completely uns, I actually dealt with this this week and seeing like cardboard boxes in with the food trash and the plastic and, and, you know, and, and they were open. And I was thinking about the rats and then I saw a bait box and I'm like, we're losing this battle unless we can come up with some solutions with the multifamily. And it's not the residents' fault. I mean, I, I'm not blaming anyone. It's something that we all need to jump in and try and figure out some solutions of how we're going to go for it because it's not sustainable. And I don't even think a $75 fee after three warnings? Like, how are the multifamily people even going to know that we're, that they, there's no place for them to put their food scraps? There's no yard bin. They just throw everything, the way it looks to me is they throw everything in these big giant bins. And so I, you know, I don't know what to do about it. I don't really have a problem with giving warnings. But my biggest complaint is, and I actually love waste management, I loved my tour with Justin. I think you are environmental stewards for trash companies. You're very efficient. The customer satisfaction is fantastic in the city of Agora Hills. So it's all good and I have no problem with extending your contract. I love that we get, you called it Most Favorable Nation, which, okay, I thought it was called Most Favorable City, but I like nation better. Yeah, and, and that's going to be part of the new contract, it'll stay in there. So I'm good with all that. But I do want to say that I need to push you on the education element. We have got to come up with something because like even like, like Justin told me, yeah. I saw two people picking out, I'm like, this must be causing a fortune, that you have people working there to pick out the contaminated stuff in the yard bin. I just couldn't even believe it. And no, I'm not going to put a plastic bag and put my food scrap, because I'm doing it 100% right. I know that. So is it okay if I don't put it in a bag? Because I can't use more plastic bags. That's just, that's not sustainable, okay? But I know we want to teach people. And I know there's a lot of people in the community that do want to put it in a bag. So I don't think you'll have a problem with that. But there's, we just, people don't know, we don't know. I'm just asking myself questions. I had a problem with the electronic. I call, they, they said, what are you going to be, and I use it at least once a year. This is the first time, they emailed me back and they said, sorry, we don't pick up that stuff. And I'm like, what do you mean? It's electronic waste. It plugs in. Doesn't that make it electronic waste? And they're like, no, no, no. We pick up TV sets, computers and monitors. And somebody at waste management was nice enough to come to my house, Justin, and pick up all my, you guys came up and picked up all my cords and, I don't get that. So we have to come up with an education campaign. We've got to educate our residents. We can't punish them with fees and penalties and all of that when we're not providing the education. Because if I'm not, if that's not electronic waste, I just, I mean, people have picked it up before. So I like the idea of 20, but I agree with, I don't see how, when I thought it was 100 a month, I thought that'll solve that problem. I'm not sure 20 will solve the problem. Because I had the same issue where I got put off to the next quarter. And so I guess if you guys can coordinate that, that if I don't get it this month, I'm going to get it next month. And, you know, you'll come back next year and we can talk about it more. Monthly is probably better than quarterly. But we do need to educate people. And, you know, when Councilmember Sylvester tells me that she went on the website and couldn't, did the search and couldn't find the senior discount, that needs to be on your website. And it really needs to be as easy as that. Search, you know, senior discount. And because we need to be able to have our seniors who are on, especially those on fixed income, have got to have some sort of a break from this. So in terms of raising, you know, I just can't even imagine raising residential, valet service residential bin by 70 something percent is just too much. It's, that's just not going to fly. And, and, you know, with Anandale, again, we need to, I don't have a problem with you raising it. It's kind of high for them just starting out with this. But we need to educate them and find some options for them because they're not going to be able to keep going forward with that valet service, I wouldn't think. With organics, you can call it whatever you want, but we still need to educate people. And I'm, I would be open to, you know, having a fee with warnings, but not, not right now. Let's revisit that next year when we have a good education system out there and especially with the multifamily. And with the, I already said agreement extension, I'm 100% for that, for the four years. And let's see, senior discount on the website. And I think that's about it, but we, we have a lot of work to do. And we really need you to help carry the weight on the education part and, and work with us. And so, we have a blog that we, no, that's, we have a podcast now that, you know, Romero has promised me that we're going to do one on 1383. And so, there we go. Because we really need, you know, this is something that, it's, it's dear to my heart, believe it or not. I actually like to talk trash and Louis and I go way back on this. And so I really want to make sure that people are educated and that they're doing it properly. And I know that's what you want. So we just have to, we have to solve this problem. So, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, I just wanted to clarify, are you for the solid waste, I mean, not, are, are, would you approve the solid waste rate adjustment request that they put the 5%?
That for the curbside service, yes. For the valet service?
No, yeah, for the curbside.
I couldn't go that high. If curbside, I'm fine. Valet service, I, I can't, it, it seems really high. And it sounds like the rest of the council's not leaning that direction. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay with a small increase.
Could I just add one more when we're talking about education too? Is on the actual what goes in the recycle bin? Because my husband and I are always arguing about this. Because I say, don't put the milk cartons in because they have the wax.
Councilmember Sylvester, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. I, I've got a urgent request from Councilmember.
Oh, sorry.
Hi.
Wolf, and I just wanted to make sure that he was able to do.
So, like to apologize, but I'm going to need to recuse myself from this item because I live in Anandale and it so directly affects me. So I am going to be recusing myself, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. Okay, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yeah, sorry. When we do the education piece, exactly what goes in recycle? Because I see so many people putting their styrofoam in there, which I know doesn't belong. And then which plastic containers from the supermarket can you put in? Which meat trays can you put in? All of those things, there is so much confusion. I'm continuously going through my recycle bin at home, saying, no, 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 you know. She's laughing because she does it too.
I'm laughing because whenever my kids come to town, I have to go through the recycle bin.
And then also empty out the soda can before you put it in because there's always that little bit of drop, you know. So all of those things, when, when we're talking about the education piece, we, we all are guilty and we, we need to do more. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for those comments. I, I, the first thing actually I wanted to comment on is the extension of the contract. The reason why I wanted to comment about it is, I mean, it's a pretty big deal. I mean, we're, 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 the contract ends at the end of '23 and we're saying we're going to give them four more years on the contract without anybody coming here and bidding against them on it. So I'm, I'm saying that just as someone that, I think waste management is doing a good job right now. And I, I think that they've earned the right to ask for the four-year extension. But I think that us agreeing to do that is giving waste management a lot. I mean, it's not giving any, nothing. Many cities here in the area decided to bid out their, their, their trash and they went with other companies. And I'm not saying that I want to do that, but I, I just know that that's something that's a possibility if we wanted to do it. But I don't want to put our residents through the trauma of having to have new requirements and new days to pick up the trash and all that. And so I, I'm actually agreement that I would be willing to extend the agreement from 2023 to 2027. And I think that that's a big deal. I mean, it, it should be a big deal for you guys. Basically, you can do some planning and know that you have income coming in from Agora Hills. And so I, I, I don't take that consideration lightly is what I wanted to tell you first on that. And then on the second thing concerning the rate increases, obviously always concerned just like everybody that was up here and made comments on how it's going to be reactive to the residents here in Agora and when they get their bill and see this adjustment. And if it's a pretty substantial adjustment, even if it's, if it's going up from $15 to 22 or something like that, that's still, for an average resident, that would be a substantial increase on what they're normally used to on their bill. And I think that's what we were all getting to, is that I, I don't feel comfortable raising any rate dramatically to where a resident would say, I can't believe the city's allowing them to do this or I can't believe that they're increasing this. And the same goes for the water bills and electric bills. Because I can tell you, there's been plenty of comments on the public social media concerning water and electricity increases. So I, I don't want the same thing to happen on the waste management on, on trash. So I, I think I'm definitely, I totally agree with the 5% increase with the solid waste rate based on the landfill. So I'm fine on that and I'm fine also on the CPI increase. And so on the valet service, I'm not. I mean, obviously with the 27% increase. And so I would basically just go with the CPI increase. And the same thing applies to the contamination fee. I think you said there, there currently is a fee like $28. I think you said there currently is a fee like $28.83 or $29, and I'm fine with the CPI increase. But I think that's something going forward, if we're going to enter into a long-term agreement with you till, for another four years, that I think, the comments that we've made here tonight, I hope that you take those to heart about how we have to answer to our residents when they come to the podium and say, I can't believe that you just let my trash get increased 27% or 70%. And so I hope going forward that, that you, that you take those, take that comment to future rate increases going forward. So those are my comments on it. And Mayor Pro Tem.
So if I can just add to that, I don't necessarily think it's fair that people who have the valet are just having a CPI increase, and those of us who have curbside are having a 5% increase over CPI? So I would say it should be across the board, whatever the percentage is.
Now, if I can clarify for the council, it sounds like from what staff's hearing is the council is, as you know, the CPI is automatic. That comes. But what I think what I'm hearing from the council is you're authorizing the solid waste rate adjustment, which is a few more cents, and you're not approving the valet service fee increase or the contamination fee. So that, that solid wa, the CPI plus the solid wa, the solid waste wa, solid waste rate adjustment, that's across the board.
That's across the board.
Yes, but remember, there are some categories because when you take the CPI and you take that additional solid waste rate adjustment, if some categories, as I saw, explained in the presentation, there are some service levels that aren't going to change because it goes over the, it goes over because of the most favorite city clause. So some of those will see only a few cents change. But in essence, once you approve tonight, the CPI adjustment, not CPI, once you approve the solid waste rate adjustment, the rates will be adjusted with CPI plus whatever solid waste rate adjustment is based on the fees that we have. It'll go across the board.
That's across the board?
Yes.
Okay, and so this was just additional for the valet?
Yeah, the valet was just a separate, they wanted to increase that fee beyond, because it's all beyond CPI.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. So in terms of the valet, I don't know if the council is interested in at least having some additional percent. I mean, that's a really burdensome waste job that, you know, and what's it's doing to, you know, to talk about greenhouse gases, that, you know, three trucks have to come in for Annandale and Old Agoura? I mean, I don't know what the solutions are, but it seems like there should probably be some increase. Again, I'm not for 27 and 72, but maybe across the board, like an additional 10% or something.
Well, if I'm, if I can jump in, is it, so what I'm hearing right now, if I'm reading the staff report correctly, we're, we're all agreeing on item one, which is that receive and file the report for the 3% for residential. We're still talking about number two, which is the additional solid waste rate adjustment, the valet service fee and the organics contamination fee. And we all agree on number three, which is the renewal. So is there a way that we can approve one and three and have our staff work with Waste Management to come back and have maybe a longer term? I don't even, like I said the word correction before, but I don't, I think to council, to Mayor Pro Tem, we kind of get used to our new titles here, to Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber's point, it's not, it's not something that I necessarily, we're necessarily in agreement that we want to keep catching up on. We, we want you to be able to stay sustainable financially, of course, but we also don't want to perpetuate a situation that is decreasing the effects of what you're trying to do, which is help the environment, right? Like, this is just taking away from that. So is there a way we can just pull that piece and come back later, or does this all have to be decided tonight?
It's the, it's the council's desire. If you wish to approve, obviously the CPI gets filed, and you approve the solid waste rate adjustment, you're not going to approve the valet service. But if you want to make an adjustment to your own, you can direct staff to work with Waste Management to see what that fair service fee is, and we could come back to you and, basically come back with a revised report that would just address that fee only. We could do that. We could ask Waste Management to come to us and propose a fee, and we can come back to subcommittee if you wanted and go with that.
That's what I would like to see.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And then, and that's, so that's the valet service fee. And then with the organics, I think, did we agree that they can change the name, but the price isn't going up?
That's what I understood.
So the only one you want to come back with is the valet service fee?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, is that for the valet, so I can chime, is that for the valet service fee solely for multifamily? Are you talking also about the residential bin service?
I would say both.
Both.
Both, okay. So staff has clear direction. So what we'll do is, tonight you'll approve the solid waste rate adjustment, the extension, then staff will return with some recommendation. We'll talk to Waste Management, see what those two proposed fees could be, and then we can come back and present that to you. And then at that time, you can either approve or reject it. And if you approve it, then all we would do is just make a modification to the rate table. So once you approve it tonight, the new rates will become effective without the two that we've just mentioned. And we can come back, agendize the item, make it available for the public if they want to comment, and then we can come back and make a decision on that.
That's what I would like to see.
That sounds good to me.
I agree, and I think it gives time for the public who live in those areas to give us some feedback. And maybe they have some suggestions of how things could maybe be improved. I don't know.
And then the only other thing that I would add is, Mayor, Ann said that if you're concerned that you might want to put it out for bid next time, but you're agreeing to the extension for four years now, I would say forever who's here in 2026, which seems like a long way off, but it won't be, and we'll probably all be here. But Nate, City Manager, if you're still here and Louis, that that should be brought up in early '26 so that if it's going to go out, if that council, whoever that might be, doesn't want to extend it again in '27, that they have time to put it out for bid. Because right now, it would be hard to put, to do that.
If I can chime in real quick, we, as staff, if you, obviously, it sounds like the recommendation's going to be to extend the contract, we would come back to you early. We, we need about a year. It takes, if you're going to go out to do an RFP, that takes about a year.
Okay.
We would come back to you and say, hey, we're a year away. Because what, what ultimately ends up happening in that case is, let's say, as we get into, we get closer to 2027, you as the council have the option to sit down with Waste and renegotiate a brand-new agreement if you desire to do that, or you can elect as a council to say, you know what, we want to do an RFP and go out. And then we solicit, we prepare a bid package, it gets put out, and we go through that, but that process takes a year. So we would come back to you probably end of 2025, right beginning in 2026, and say, okay, let's have a discussion. What do you want to do? Do you want to renegotiate? Or do all of you have a consent, whichever council is here? Do you all want to put out an RFP?
And now I just realized that that, I shouldn't, that yes, this is just an extension of this contract, but this is the only extension.
Yeah, this is the only extension.
Right.
After that.
So it will have to go out.
Either be a renegotiation of a new agreement, if that's the council's desire, or you all elect to, no, we want to put this out to RFP.
Got it. Sorry about that.
Okay, I think based on the attorney recommendation, I think I may try to pull out pieces of, of this proposal and make a motion in a second on each one. So I'm going to start, I'm going to now call for a motion in a second to approve Waste Management's franchise agreement extension request, optioned to June 30, 2027. Do I have a motion in a second?
Councilmember Buckley-Weber moves to approve.
I think the motion needs to be a little bit expanded, right? Because it has to be all of it, or are they separate? We're taking it separate? Okay.
Did I have a?
Councilmember Sylvester, seconds.
Seconds, okay.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead, you have approval four to zero with Councilmember Wolf abstaining.
I will now call for a motion in a second to approve the solid waste rate escalation increase of 3% for the residential solid waste services for 2023. Do I have a motion in a second? And please state your names.
Councilmember Sylvester makes a motion to approve.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber seconds the motion.
Thank you, and I'll now defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead, you have approval four to zero, and the record will reflect abstention from Councilmember Wolf.
Thank you. I will now call for a motion in a second for, to approve the solid waste rate adjustment request submitted by Waste Management. Do I have a motion in a second? Please state your names.
Councilmember Buckley-Weber, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry. I just got an iWatch and it just told me it's time for bed. Got to go. So Councilmember Buckley-Weber moves to approve.
I'll second. This is Deborah Klein Lopez.
Awesome. All right, now I'll defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead, you have approval four to zero with an abstention from Councilmember Wolf.
Awesome. So I will now call for a motion in a second to approve the organic, or do we agree on the organic contamination?
No.
Oh, brought back to staff, and also. So, so I think I will now call for a motion in a second to deny Waste Management's request for the organ, organics contamination fee request, and also for the valet service fee request.
You don't need to deny that.
Okay.
I think staff has clear direction from the council at this point.
Okay.
And so we can take that and go back and continue on the Greenhouse project, and we'll let that come through and head back to the council. Thank you very much. All right.
So to clarify, there will be continued discussions on the valet service fee and the organics contamination fee, and will eventually be brought back to the council at a later, later date. Okay, great.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to council staff comments. Are there any comments from staff?
No, there are not.
Any comments from the city council?
Should we bring Councilmember Wolf back in so that if there's?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, poor guy. First council meeting, we boot him out.
His first one?
I can start my comments. I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I hope it was a very restful holiday season. And I just want to say that when we do do the podcast with our assistant city manager, Adeva, and Waste Management with, regarding SB 1383, I just can't wait for the intro because I'm sure it's going to be like Romero jumping out of a trash can or something like that. I suggest that before we do the podcast, you watch a few just so you know. The, the content is fantastic and very serious and very helpful, but the intros are really something. So, you know, I can't wait for that. That's all I want to say.
Well, we could have him riding a buffalo.
I guess I also want to say that I wasn't able to make it out there. Last year was a very busy year, but it's, it's on my radar to meet, to meet you out there this year. But looking forward to that podcast as well. That's it.
All right, any other comments?
I just wanted to say it's great to be back and, you know, Happy New Year to everybody, and I look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Wolf?
What, what'd I miss?
Welcome back. Welcome back.
No, thank you to the staff for the professionalism and putting together these very complex reports and answering my questions on, on, on these very complex issues. And I really look forward to working with this council and congratulate Mayor Anstead on the first meeting, running first meeting, and look forward to working with you all this year.
Excellent.
Well, I better say something then. Happy New Year, everybody. And welcome to council member. Welcome back. I enjoy working with you again. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, well, the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January 25, 2023, in the council chambers of the Civic Center. It is anticipated that members of the public will have the opportunity to participate in person in the council chambers or by remote video conferencing. At this time, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Will the maker of the motion, in a second, to adjourn? Please state your names.
This is Deborah Klein Lopez, so moved.
And Councilmember Sylvester, second.
Awesome. I now defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Buckley-Weber?